All right, well, good morning and welcome to the third WSGA Rules Review Session. Thank you all for joining us in person and online, especially for those who are joining us live online or watching or listening to the recording of this afterwards. Please feel free to let us have any feedback regarding that, whether to Bill Lenman, David Kohn, or me, because that's very helpful and that's a component of this review that means a lot to us. So, any suggestions or any comments in terms of quality of for audio and so forth, please let us know. And for next week's presentation, not for this week's, but for next week's, the recording will feature audio. So, for among other things, if you decide that you would prefer just look at the WSGA logo than to look at me, which would be perfectly reasonable, please let us know. All right, well, we'll pick up where we left off last week. Last week, we finished with Rule Nine, so we'll start with Rule Ten. And, you know, first notice that there is some organization to the rules and to the sequencing of the rules. How with the first three rules, you start with some basic principles as to how the game is played and two general forms of play, match play and stroke play. Then Rules Four and Five give the player his equipment and place some restrictions on that. Rule Six outlines the player's responsibilities. Rule Seven, just as you would for a round of golf, allows him to warm up and practice. Rules Eight and Nine talk about what effectively the player's allowed to say or required to say during the round. And now, we're gradually getting the player to the first tee, so we need to determine who, what the order of play is off the first tee. So, we start with Rule Ten, and then Rule Eleven, we'll talk about actually playing from the first tee. All right, so with Rule Ten. Ten dash one and ten dash two were broken up into match play and stroke play. And while the general principle as to what the order of play is, is the same for the two forms of play, where the two forms vary is the consequence for playing out of turn. So, we'll see what the difference is there in ten dash one C and ten dash two C. So, first, Rule Ten Dash One dealing with match play. Clause A, "When starting the play of the hole, the side that has the honor at the first tee ground is determined by the order of the draw." And the draw means that in a match play tournament with brackets, that whoever's on top in that bracket has the honor on the first tee. But if you're not playing in the tournament, so for example, Bill and I are just going out to play a friendly match, we might toss a coin on the first tee. So, in the absence of a draw, the honors should be decided by lot. The side that wins the hole takes honor at the next tee ground. If hole's been had, then you've retained the honor at the previous tee ground. During play of the hole, so, which meaning, meaning that after both players have started play of the hole, so, the ball farther from the hole is played first, which we all know if balls are equidistant from the hole, or it's hard to tell which ball's farther from the hole, the order of play should be determined by lot. So, with all that in mind, what is the ruling if, let's say, Arnold and I are playing a match? I have the honor, I tee off, my ball strikes a tree, and the ball rebounds thirty yards behind the tee. Who plays next?
Arnold.
Yeah, Arnold does, because we're still under Clause Ten Dash One A. This Ten Dash One B applies only once both players have started play of the hole. As Arnold hasn't done that yet, Arnold would play next. Exception to this, to Ten Dash One B is in best ball and four ball play, whereas we see and most of us know that in especially four ball play, the side may play in the order it considers best for strategic purposes, that occasionally they might decide that the partner who's closer to the hole should play first, which is fine. And now, the note. First, we'll go through the note, then we'll go through some examples, because it's, the note is not necessarily the easiest thing to understand. When it becomes known, becomes known that the original ball is not to be played as it lies, and the player is required, so I'd underline becomes known, underline required, to play a ball as nearly as possible at the spot from which the original was last played, the order of play is determined by the spot from which the previous stroke was made. But when a ball may, underline may, may be played from a spot other than where the previous stroke was made, the order of play is determined by the position where the original ball came to rest. Now, what, what, what does that mean? All right, well, the first, there is a distinction, and it's based on whether the player is required to play from where the previous stroke was made, or he has the, an option as to where to play from, and even if one of those options is where the, the spot of the previous stroke. So, let's say, for example, a player, I slice my tee shot and goes out of bounds. What determines, or to make it more applicable, let's say, hit my second shot, it goes out of bounds. So, now, who plays next? Do I play next, or does Arnold, whose ball is ten yards in front of where I just played from? Does he?
Well, you play next unless you don't know that it's out of bounds.
That's right, let's, and then that's, that's an important distinction, Ken. Let's say, in the fact where I know the ball is out of bounds, then I will play next according to that first sentence, because I'm required with out of bounds, there's only one option, stroke and distance. I'm required to play from where I just played from, and my, and the reference point for determining the order of play is not where the ball lies out of bounds, it's where I just played from. And since that's farther from the hole than where Arnold lies, I play next. So, now, let's look at a variation of that. Hit my tee shot in the fairway, hit my second shot off into the tall rough. And, don't say anything, Arnold, his ball is ten yards in front of where I just played from, so Arnold plays next, and he hits it on the green. We go up, we look in the tall rough for my ball, and after five minutes, we can't find it. So, now, my ball's lost, so I have to proceed under stroke and distance. So, the question is, has Arnold played out of turn? Has Arnold played from closer to the hole than where I last played from? And the answer to that is, no, he has not played out of turn, because when he played from ten yards closer to the hole, at that point, did we know that my ball was lost? Did we know that I was going to be required to return to that spot? The answer is, no, we didn't know, know that. So, for that reason, Arnold is not considered to have played out of turn, which is a good result, because otherwise, think about the mess that would result if I could go back and recall Arnold's stroke when, when really he did nothing wrong, and also think about the consequences that I could have on the pace of play of things, for if Arnold was saying, "No, John, I'm not going to play until we go up there and find your ball." So, that's why the first sentence is worded the way it is. Now, the second sentence, "When the player may play from a spot other than where the original stroke was made." So, let's go through an example. Arnold and I hit our tee shots in the fairway, and I sliced my second shot into a lateral water hazard up by the green. And, so, the question is, where do I play from? And does it, and let's say it's in ten feet of water, where, and does it, does the order of play depend as to which option, under the water hazard rule, I select? And the answer to that is, no, it does not. That regardless of which relief option I select, even if I use the stroke and distance option, it is Arnold's turn to play next, because his ball lying in the fairway, hundred and forty yards from the hole, is farther from the hole than my ball lying in the pond, twenty yards from the hole. So, for that reason, you, so you go by the location of my ball, even if it's in the middle of the pond, and you say, "Okay, which ball's farther from the hole?", and that determines the order of play, regardless of which relief option I take. So, even if I use the stroke and distance option under the lateral water hazard rule, Arnold would still play next. And one way to think about is that when a player has options, he is not allowed, the rules do not allow him to manipulate the order of play based on which relief option he selects, so. So, a few examples to shed some light on what, at first glance, seems a pretty complicated note. Now, Ten Dash One C, playing out of turn. If a player plays when his opponent should have played, so this could be on the tee ground, or it could be during play of the hole. There's no penalty, but the opponent may require the player to cancel the stroke and replay it in the correct order. So, there's not necessarily a penalty, but there is a consequence. One of the more famous applications of this was at the Solheim Cup in two thousand or so, when Annika Sorenstam in the four ball match played out of turn, and she actually chipped in for birdie. The two Americans, after consulting their captain, after they realized, after Annika chipped in, that she hadn't actually played out of turn, then the Americans had her cancel replay in the correct order, and she missed the chip shot. And so, that is a, that's a possible, not necessarily a consequence, but it is, or not necessarily a penalty, but it is a consequence. All right, now, Ten Dash Two, and on to stroke play. When starting play of the hole, principle is the same for the order of play as in match play. The competitor with honor at the first tee ground is determined by the order of the draw, meaning the order of the names on the grouping sheet. If there's not a draw, and the competitor with the lowest score takes honor at the next tee ground, and so forth, which I think we all know well. Curious exception to that is actually with Stapleford Play, where, believe it or not, use the net scores to deter, or the actuals, to determine the order of play, which is, and we'll talk about that briefly under Rule Thirty Two. Ten Dash Two B, during play of the hole, ball farthest from the hole is played first, same principle as in match play. Exceptions, and there's an additional exception for stroke play. We still have the exception for four ball stroke play, where the two partners may play in the order they consider to be better. But there's the additional one that's unique to stroke play, does not apply in match play, is that if a player in stroke play is asked to lift his ball, does it assist or interferes with play, that he has the option to play first rather than lift. The note under Ten Dash Two B is essentially the same that we just covered under Ten Dash One B, so we won't go over that. Now, Ten Dash Two C is, is very different than match play. In stroke play, if a player plays out of turn, there is no penalty, and the ball is played as it lies. So, there's no option for, say, a fellow competitor to have the player cancel replay in the correct order. The only time there's a penalty is if the committee determines that the competitors have agreed to play out of turn for the purpose of giving one of them an advantage, in which case, they are disqualified. So, the example we've used before is, say, Bill and I really work on our games, and we're playing in the Masters one year, and we come to the twelfth hole in the final round, where it happened to be in the last group, we were tied for lead during the last day. We come to the twelfth hole, little par three, where the wind's always swirling, and no one quite knows what's going on, and I've shot forty on the front nine, and I'm completely out of the tournament, but Bill was tied for the lead when we come to number twelve. And somehow, I had birdied eleven, so I have the honor, or rather, no, rather, I had, of course, hit in the water and doubled eleven, so Bill has the honor on twelve, but I go up to him, and I say, "Bill, look, even though you have the honor, why don't you let me go first, so that way you can see what the wind is doing?" And he says, "John, that'd be great, thank you very much." All right, well, in that case, then, what would be the ruling? Well, both of us would wind up being disqualified, because we've agreed to play out of turn for the purpose of assisting Bill. Playing out of turn, even agreeing to play out of turn for another purpose, such as to speed up play, is not a penalty under Ten Dash Two C. So, it's an extreme case. Has anyone here ever even had a ruling with that, where you've even had a suspicion that players have played out of turn to help somebody, have you, Bill?
It came up in the NCAA Division Three Women's Tournament at La Sonia, and they were doing it for speed of play, not for, to give one an advantage, but an official had gone on red alert. It turned out to not be.
And it can be tricky, and this is where the player's intent there does matter, but you could have some cases where, say, on the seventy-second hole of the tournament, where often the players who are out of it like to just go ahead and finish, and let the eventual winner have the stage to himself. Well, what if they, you're on a similar line and so forth, that, and you go ahead and putt out, when that could assist the other person? Well, why were you doing it? And if the, if, first, if there wasn't an agreement between the players, there's not going to be a penalty. And often, the player would just say, "Look, I was just trying to get out of the way," so he can have the green to himself, in which case, there'd be no penalty. And one point to note with this is that this is not an application of Rule One Dash Three, that as we talked about, Rule One Dash Three requires the player's knowledge of the rules that they're waiving, that they have to know the rule in order to waive it. That this, just as if the committee determines that the competitors have agreed to play out of turn to give one an advantage, they are disqualified. So, even if they mistakenly think that they're allowed under the rules to agree to play out of turn for the purpose of giving one of them an advantage, they are still disqualified for that. Yeah, I'm here.
John, do both of them have to be complicit in that act, or if you just, on your own, decided to go and tee off first?
Yeah, that, that's a good point, Harry. And that the question is, do both players have to be complicit in that act, or if one player on his own just does it for the purpose of helping the other player, is there a breach of this rule? The answer is that both players do have to be part of it, and that with emphasis on the word agreed, in the rule, that if there's not an agreement, and that there could be an implied agreement, that could be a breach of this, but if there's no agreement between the two, then there's no breach of that. All right, Ten Dash Three, which provides the order of play for a provisional ball or another ball played from the tee ground. So, first, this applies only to the tee ground, and so it applies if a player plays a provisional ball or another ball. So, there could be a few options for what that other ball could be. It could be a case where, say, a player hits his tee shot, and he knows for a fact it's out of bounds, so he's not playing a provisional, he's just playing another ball. If a player plays a provisional or another ball from the tee, he must do so after his opponent or fellow competitors made his first stroke. And if more than one player needs to play a provisional, then you retain the original order of play. So, if Bill and I are playing together, I have the honor, hit my ball into the trees, I want to play a provisional ball, I would do so after Bill plays. And if Bill does the same thing, then we just repeat the order of play. So, it'd be John, Bill, John, Bill, in that sequence. So, with all that in mind, let's look at a few decisions. Ten Slash One and Ten Slash Two, or provide examples of the note to Ten Dash One B and Ten Dash Two B, and we went through some examples of that. Ten Slash Three is good to know, sometimes if, let's say, both players hit their ball into the same general area of a lateral water hazard, well, we know that if they find their balls in there, the order of play is determined by their relative positions in the hazard, whichever ball is farther from the hole is played next, regardless of the relief option used. But the question is, what if you, you don't find either ball, and they were lost in roughly the same area? Well, in that case, the players would go by, it would be the same as if they couldn't, as if the balls were equidistant from the hole, and determine the order of play by lot. That decision, Ten Slash Four, is useful, because it provides some information that's really not in the rules. That we, as we just saw with Rule Ten Slash, Ten Dash Three, that provides for the order of play for a provisional or another ball from the tee ground, but the rule is silent as to the order of play for a provisional ball other than from the tee ground. And this decision, Ten Slash Four, provides that answer. So, let's take a minute and read it. In a match between A and B, A is a approach shot towards, into the trees, he wants to play a provisional ball. What's the order of play for A's provisional ball? Well, in this case, if A, A, for example, knew that his ball is lost or out of bounds, then, in other words, he was not going to play a provisional ball, he's just going to play another ball, what would be the order of play that we just saw in the note to Ten Dash One B and Ten Dash Two B? He would play that ball immediately, because he's required to do so, and if he, before his opponent plays, knows that he's going to play from there, he would do so immediately. So, it makes sense, then, for the provisional ball to be played in the same order. So, the decision provides that except for the tee ground, the order of play for a provisional ball is for the player playing the provisional ball to do so immediately. Therefore, A would play his provisional before B plays. If A allows B to play, or if A states his intention to play a provisional, A is abandoning his right to recall B's stroke, but he may still play the provisional ball. So, with that last paragraph, let's say, Bill and I are playing a match, it's my, we're in the fairway, I'm away, I play next. I hit my ball into the trees, and I just stay there, not very happy with myself, and then Bill plays. So, the que, and the question is, may I then play a provisional ball? Answer is yes, that I, I haven't given up my right to play a provisional ball, because I haven't gone forward to search for it, so I may play it, but what this decision says, I can't have best of both worlds and play the provisional ball and tell Bill that he's played out of turn, that by allowing Bill to play next, I've given up my right to recall his next stroke.
John?
Yeah?
I want to make a little editorial comment. The, this is a question that is on the closed book practice exam in USGA University, and I get it wrong all the time.
We'll have to go over this one again.
You know, I, you know, I need some remedial training. And I guess what's, what I find interesting about it is, I would think a question like this would be on the open portion, because as you said just a minute or two ago, that it doesn't really talk about this circumstance in the actual rule, and it's only referenced in a decision. And I really get, you know, as we would say in Italian, you know, all, you know, futzed over the thing, because I get so confused about, because it's not, it's not, that's not what the rule, the rule doesn't explicitly port it out.
Okay, so, so.
Italian?
No, it's, yeah.
Solid English.
Yeah, it's, whatever. Italians and Jewish people are like this.
All right, so, so Phil's question was, with Ten Slash Three, how why on the PJ/USGA practice exams, that in the closed book portion and the open book portion?
Right.
I think you can make the case that the rule itself covers it, in that, in that with Ten Dash One B, where it says if the balls are equidistant from the hole, or their positions relative to the hole are not determinable. I, I think you could, you could make, if both, both our balls are in the middle of the lake, and they seem roughly close to each other, but we don't know what, I think we could say their relative positions to the holes are not, to the hole is not determinable. So, I, I think you can say that the rule supports that, 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 the answer to the decision is grounded in the rule. As to whether that's open or closed book, you know, that, that's a, a close one, because you can, because it is the type of thing that you do, in many cases, need to read the rule, and that's, that's a close call.
Make Phil feel better. When I work as a starter in match play, I have found that seventy-five percent of the players do not know how to proceed after a, on a golf course that has a lot of water, they do not have to know how to proceed when one or both balls are in the hazard. So, it's, and it's something that I go over with them, because it's.
Well, I, I think you're, you're right, Ken, that it's not a well-understood concept, and that my guess would be if you hold, hold a number of players, many would say, "Well, it depends as to where you take relief," and that a lot of people would incorrectly say that the order of play is determined by the balls after relief is.
But, but the, this rule is different, because it's the provisional ball, and it has to be done immediately, before you even know what the stat, I guess that's where I get confused, before you even know where the, what the status of the other ball is. If it's known, then, if it's known that the other ball is out of bounds, and you have to, then you have to proceed immediately. But the provisional ball tee, you don't proceed immediately, but a provisional ball after the tee and ground, you do proceed immediately. And that's, that's where I.
Okay, all right, well, I, that, that's a good point, I can understand, and let's take a minute to go through that with the question being in decision, ten, well, in Ten Dash Three, if you're playing a provisional ball from the tee ground, you do so after your opponent has played. But in Ten Slash Four, if you play a provisional ball other than from the tee ground, you do so immediately. And then, to complicate thing, things, you have to wrinkle in the note to Ten Dash One B, that talks about when it becomes known that the original is not to be played, and you're saying when you put all the, three of those together, it's confusing.
Yeah.
I, I, I think with Ten Slash Four, the best way to look at it is to say, "Okay, when would the provisional ball become the ball in play?" It'd become the ball in play if the original is, in fact, lost or out of bounds.
Right.
So, therefore, you try to say, "Okay, if you know right away that the original is lost or out of bounds, what's the order of play?" Okay, the order of play is to play right away.
Yeah.
Then, I think it makes sense for the provisional to become in play only in those circumstances to be played in the same sequence.
Exactly, yeah.
So, I think that's.
Yeah, because if you don't know, you have to play provisional, and then therefore it could become the ball in play, therefore you should play it immediately.
Yes.
Could you comment on the involvement of a match official that is going along with a specific match, as to the involvement of getting involved if he sees someone about the play?
Okay.
Out of turn.
All right, I think that's, that's a very good point, and this is one of the things that we talked about maybe two weeks ago, how it's helpful when you have a referee, an official who's specifically assigned to that match, for the entire match, on the first tee, talk with the players, say a few things, for example, to make it very clear when they're conceding a stroke, and also to tell the players that in match play, order of play is especially important, and in match play, whoever's farther from the hole plays next, period, and if they have any questions to determine in the order of play, they should ask you. And in that case, as a referee, if they haven't asked you, but it's clear that one player is about to play out of turn, I would stop him. And I would say, "Ken, it's not, not your turn, wait for Bill, Bill to play."
Which is also okay for the referee to tell the player, is the way.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's part of the referee's job, is to decide questions of fact, which includes order of play. So, all of that is consistent. But then, what's tricky is we talked about definition of referee, that if you're a referee in match play, but not one assigned to the match, say you're covering a three-hole zone, and you see players play out of turn, you just have to have to bite your tongue. Yeah, John?
I had a situation occur many years ago, in a four-ball match play, of A-B against C-D. A hits the ball left of the green in a bunker. Partner B hits the ball back of the green, forty feet away. C hits the ball on the green, forty, fifty feet away there, but D, Bill knows very well, he was his partner one time, popped up a shot, horrible shot, off to the right in the gunge.
Okay.
Play of it, but final. So, he's over there, D is over looking for his ball, and it, it might be questionable whether it's a ground on a repair, or, or water, casual water, and in the meantime, they're all standing waiting. So, A says to opponent, or C, "Yeah, I'll play while he's looking." And the opponent says, "Well, do whatever you want," and like that, so he shoots and holds it. In the meantime, D says, "You played out of turn, I recall a shot." And then they question about, "Well, wait a minute, your partner gave me authority to play." And then, the partner says, "Well, I don't know if I give him authority, I just said, 'Do whatever you want.'" So, I ruled that that was authority. And each time, I called PJ, or in USGA, and PJ Bull answers for him. And he goes over this, he says, "I think you ruled incorrectly, it's a matter of fact which ball was away, and therefore, he should have been able to recall a shot." I had already ruled on it like that, it was sort of after the fact, but the question is what he said, is, "Yeah, do whatever you want."
Okay, so, the question is essentially, in a four-ball match, the player D is clearly farthest from the hole, and he's searching for his ball. While he's searching for his ball, C tells one of their opponents, say, A, who are at. for his ball, C tells one of their opponents, say A, or A asks C if it's okay if A goes ahead and plays, and C says, "Yeah, do whatever you want." And then, uh, S- uh, A plays, and then D says, "Hey, wait a minute, you played out of turn, I want you to cancel replay in the correct order." Is that essentially what- what happened?
Mm-hmm.
And-
The only thing is, he didn't say, "Yeah," he just said, "Do what you want." You know, he didn't say- he says, "I'll play," out there, he just said, "Do whatever you want."
All right, but here in Wisconsin, we're nice, so he probably said it in a nicer way than "do what you want." But, uh, well, I- and there, there's a- there's a helpful decision under Rule thirty, uh, under- that's a- it touches on it a little bit, it's a little bit different, but thirty dash three B slash two, uh, where it actually goes, it's, uh, I'm- like I said, it doesn't completely apply, but it touches on it. A and B abandoned A's right to complete the hole by allowing D to putt before A and B, uh, and- and so- so Ben, what I think we'd say in this case is, you know, first, I think C's comment, uh, "Do what you want," uh, would be considered authority to have authorized it. And then I would- I would say that when he said that, he has given up his ri- option to, uh, uh, actually have this stroke canceled and replayed.
Well, that's the way I pursued it, but after the fact, I got a little different, uh, in terms of-
Yeah, I- I- I think that, I- I- I think his statement is, I think it's reasonable for A to have said that he had- he had C's blessing to proceed.
It certainly is consistent with the basic USGA rule of keep play moving, you know?
Yeah.
A lot of these things, they're to keep play up, and that certainly is the way.
Yeah, and there's certainly, and there- there- while there are pace of play ramifications with that, I think that's also a case where you want to be careful, in that if you were a referee assigned to that match, and that discussion took place, you know, I think the referee should say, "No, A, sorry, you- you- you may not play next. It's, uh, C and D's turn to play." So, in which case, to help pace of play, maybe C could have played next, uh, whi- which he's allowed to do under the rules.
His first name was Al, and his second name, sorry, Peter.
Oh, I remember the situation pretty early. That was at Abbey Springs.
Oh, it was at, uh-
Lake Carroll, huh?
Yeah, Lake Carroll.
All right, and then actually, wh- uh, while we're going through the decisions, and, you know, to touch on what, uh, Tim just said, let's look at decision ten dash one C slash three, that was, uh, revised last year, that, uh, that is important, because one thing that the- one issue the USGA and RNA have wrestled with is the whole idea of pace of play, and agreeing to play out of turn occasionally in match play, because you certainly don't want players just playing willy-nilly throughout the match. But for the occasional, uh, time when they'll play out of turn for a specific reason, uh, this, uh, decision, uh, addresses. So, in match play, it's A's turn to play, but he realizes he's left a club, say, back on the tee. He decides to return to retrieve the club, and suggests his opponent B play first to save time. And that's important, to save time. If B then plays out of turn as suggested, half the players agree to waive the rules and breach of Rule one dash three. And it's a reasonable question, because if you look at Rule ten, you look at Rule one dash three, it's, uh, reasonable to think that there's a- a concern there, there's an issue. But the decision, uh, says they have not, uh, agreed to waive the rules and breach of Rule one dash three, and it establishes a principle. When done solely, solely for the purpose of saving time, a player's turn is to play may invite his opponent to play first. The opponent is under no obligation to accept the offer to play first, but if he does so, the player has waived his right under Rule ten dash one C to recall the stroke played out of turn. So this, uh, touches on Tim's point, touches on, uh, Gene's example, uh, for that, that it's okay to pla- agree to play out of turn in match play for the purpose of saving time, and if you do so, you've waived your right to, um, have- the opponent's waived his right to have the stroke, uh, recalled. So, let's see, otherwise, going through the, uh, decisions, uh, ten dash two C slash one, ball played out of turn from tee abandoned, another ball played in the proper order. I will look at that, not so much from an, uh, uh, order of play perspective, but more from a, um, kind of a stroke and distance and ball and play perspective. In stroke play, a competitor played out of turn from the tee and ground. So, what should- should he have done at that point? Just apologizing and continued to play? Um, but instead, he abandoned the ball and plays another ball from the tee and ground in the proper order. What's the ruling? Well, when he plays another ball from the tee and ground, the original ball became lost, and the original- and the second ball is in play under stroke and distance. And we'll see under Rule twenty-seven dash one, that when you actually play a ball from the spot of the previous stroke, you're deemed to have proceeded under, uh, stroke and distance. Now, we'll contrast that, and might just, uh, make a note with decision twenty-seven slash, uh, seventeen.
What was that again?
Uh, twenty-seven slash seventeen, on page four thirty-five. Uh, and let's- let's go through that for a minute. Uh, in stroke play, a competitor's ball lies through the green, plays out of turn. He should have continued playing with the ball played out of turn, but he mistakenly believes that he needs to cancel replay in the correct order. He drops another ball at the spot from which he made the stroke, but his question, his act was questioned before he plays the drop ball. What's the ruling? Okay, so the key- key differences here, or main difference here, is that he has not yet played that ball. What would be the answer if he'd actually played the drop ball in this case? It'd be the same as in decision ten dash, uh, two C slash one, that he's- he would be considered to have played under stroke and distance, and would now, uh, continue with that second ball. But in this case, though, he hasn't yet played that ball. So what's the ruling? As the drop ball was not dropped with the intention of putting it into play, uh, definition of lost ball doesn't apply, and therefore, the original is lo- not lost. But Ben, what- what he had done is he put the ball in- uh, into play under an inapplicable rule, really under a rule that doesn't exist, saying that if you play out of turn in stroke play, you have to cancel replay. So as he put that into play under an inapplicable rule, Rule twenty dash six applied, therefore that allowed him to lift the ball and proceed correctly, which would mean, uh, continuing with the original ball. So a big difference there between having that mistake caught before he played the ball, or after he played the ball. So, uh, it's helpful, I think, to look at those two decisions, uh, together in that regard. And that is it for Rule ten. Any questions on Rule ten?
John, you say that the rules, excuse me, decision twenty-seven slash seventeen, and decision ten dash one C three, or- or-
Oh, I- I'm sorry, uh, ten dash two C slash one, yeah. Because they both deal with a player mistakenly correcting the error of playing out of turn in stroke play. And the main difference there is while- while it does occur on different parts of the course, larger differences, that in one case, he actually puts the ball into play, uh, or he actually, uh, makes a stroke, in the other case, he does not. All right, on to Rule eleven, tee and ground. So we've determined the order of play, so now let's talk about how the player will go about, uh, playing from the tee and ground. Eleven dash one deals with the mechanics of, uh, teeing the ball, and what the- what the player may do, and, uh, what- what the limitations are. Uh, when putting a ball into play from the tee and ground, uh, first, it must be played from within the tee and ground. And Rule eleven dash four will tell us what, uh, to do if he does not play from within the tee and ground. It must be played from the surface of the tee and ground, and we'll see in a minute what that means, what the surface, uh, covers. Now, or it must be played from a conforming tee. And back in Appendix four, there's, uh, 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 limitations as to the design of the tee. And that- that, uh, conforming tee must be placed in or on the surface of the, uh, ground. So for the purposes of this rule, the surface includes an irregularity of surface, which the player, uh, may create, uh, and sand or other natural substance, uh, placed there. So a common question is, if a player kicks his heel into the ground and move up, raise up a mound of earth, may he then place the tee in that mound? Answer is yes, that he may. And one key point, if we look in Appendix four, with the, um, regarding the, uh, for, uh, limitations on tees, on page five seventy-nine, it's the very first item under Appendix four, uh, uh, defines a tee. It's a device designed to raise the ball off the ground. So, based on that, is a pencil a tee? The answer is no, because a pencil is not designed, uh, to elevate a ball. So therefore, a player may not u- may no longer use a pencil to, uh, tee his ball. And a tee must not be longer than four inches, be designed or manufactured in such a way that could indicate line of play, that, uh, could influence the, um, movement of the ball, or otherwise assist the player. So one point is, or main point is with the length, tee may not be longer than four inches. That do- and that doesn't say the ball may not be elevated more than four inches off the ground. So let's look at two big applications of that. Let's say a player takes a five-inch tee, but sticks it two inches in the ground. So the ball is elevated three inches above the ground, and the player plays. Is he in breach of Rule eleven dash one?
Yeah.
Answer is yes, because he used a tee, regardless of how he used it, he used a tee that did not conform. Now, uh, let's take a case where a player has a four-inch tee, so the tee conforms, and he kicks up a mound on the gr- tee and ground, and he sticks his tee on top of that mound, and as a result, the ball is now four and a half inches above the ground, and he plays. Any breach there? Answer is no, that- that is not- not a breach. So, uh, so the- the main thing there is that the ultimate determinant is not the elevation of the ball off the ground. It's how he goes about, uh, teeing the ball, the object he, uh, specifically the object he uses.
John, un- under Rule thirteen, you're allowed to create or eliminate irregularities of surface within the tee and ground. Um, I think that one of the questions on the open book quiz last year was a player, uh, positioned himself within the two club lengths with it- within the tee and ground, created an irregularity of surface within the tee and ground to align himself.
Okay.
And then teed the ball, and- and used that as an alignment feature.
Okay.
So, this is- is this one of those circumstances where the prohibition actually trumps the permission?
Uh, well, I- so- so the question was, a player created an irregularity of surface within the tee and ground for the purpose of assisting himself with alignment.
Right.
And the question was, is that a breach of Rule thirteen dash two, or eleven dash one, or eight dash two A?
Right.
Well, let's look at this, I- I- I think the first point is with Rule thirteen dash two, let's take a, uh, quick look at it. Um, that is, an exception is that, um, the player is allowed to create or eliminate irregularities of surface, but that exception applies really only to cases where the player is improving, say, his line of play and so forth. That this, what this says is that if it's okay to create an irregularity of surface for the purpose, i- if that improves, let's say, the lie of the ball. It doesn't say, Rule thirteen dash two is silent on, uh, anything that has to do with indicating the line of play. So, uh, so in that regard, Rule thirteen two- dash two doesn't really apply. I'd say it's really, and since you're not doing it for the purpose of teeing the ball, I'd say it's really just an eight dash two A issue.
Right.
So, uh, the- just the simple act of creating that mark, I would say, uh, is not an issue, but you have to essentially remove it, just as if you posed a head cover or something there.
Yeah, yeah.
Before the stroke is-
That's what I always got wrong.
Yep.
Wrong.
So, Phil, we have to- have to stop on this old part.
Okay, a couple times.
You sound like a stubborn person.
Yeah.
All right, uh, finishing up eleven dash one, if a player makes a stroke at a ball on non-conforming tee, or a ball teed in a manner not permitted, he is disqualified. So it's worth noting that the penalty is triggered with the actual stroke. So if a player simply tees his ball with a six-inch tee, and then a fellow competitor says, "Hey, wait a minute, you can't do that," and the player removes the six-inch tee, uses a three-inch tee, and plays, he's okay. It's only if he actually makes a stroke at the ball teed in such a way that he's disqualified. Eleven dash two, uh, kind of interesting rule, dealing specifically with the, uh, tee markers. There's the tee mark- markers are artificial objects, and they're on the course, uh, so that means that they are obstructions, but they have a special status under the rules, and that status can actually change, as we'll see. Before making his first stroke with any ball on the tee and ground, uh, the tee markers are deemed to be fixed. So, first point, this applies, remember, each player really has only one tee and ground on the hole. So, if you're playing on a course that has five sets of tees, and you're playing from, say, the green tees, what's the status of the white tee markers? Are they deemed to be fixed? The answer is no, the white tee markers are not deemed to be fixed. Only your green tee markers are deemed to be fixed, because, remember, that- that what the area with the white, uh, tee markers is not actually your tee and ground, that you have only rule tee and ground, and that's with the- defined by the green tee markers.
They're obstructions, I think.
Yeah, so- so they are obstructions. So among the other things, if you're playing a course where, let's say, those white tee markers are very close to the green tee markers, and you're concerned that you might hit it, or it's mentally obstru- uh, bothers you, is it okay to remove that white tee marker before you play? The answer is yes. Because that is not- that does not define your tee and ground. And this applies before your, uh, first shot, or, uh, your first stroke with any ball on the hole being played. So meaning, for example, if you have to return to the tee, uh, under stroke and distance, that the tee markers are deemed to be fixed before you, uh, play that next ball. In these circumstances, if the player moves or allows to be moved a tee marker for the purpose of avoiding interference with his stance, area of intent, swing, or line of play, he incurs the penalty for breach of Rule thirteen dash two. And that's the rule, uh, we'll talk about in a little bit. And that's an interesting provision, because, as we'll see, Rule thirteen dash two is actually an intent-free rule. It is not an intent-based rule. That, uh, in Rule thirteen dash two, for example, if, uh, say you break a tree branch for no particular reason, and that happens to improve your line of play, even if that was not your intention, you're in breach of Rule thirteen dash two. So it's interesting to note that this does, uh, impose the added standard of, uh, the int- for the intention, uh, of improving, uh, that ar- area, or for avoiding interference. Then the player's in breach of Rule thirteen dash two. So all that's fine, but this does beg the question of, okay, what if the player moves the tee marker for another reason? And fortunately, uh, there is a lengthy decision on the, uh, facing page, eleven dash two slash two, that tells us, uh, what to do. And we won't go through this in detail. This is another one of those decisions where, as an official, the main thing is, uh, it's just helpful to know that there is a decision that covers a variety of situations in which a tee marker's moved, and gives various remedies when there is, and is not a penalty, what the player's allowed to do, uh, to avoid penalty, and so forth. Uh, it probably- perhaps the most common one that we- that we will go through is the second example. Uh, B, player moves the tee marker before or after, uh, making a stroke from the tee and ground, but in his view, the tee markers are too close together, aimed in the wrong direction, and so forth. So, can't help it, maybe he's a former golf administrator, and he just can't, or maybe he's OCD and can't stand, uh, misaligned, uh, tee markers. So he, uh, repositions it. What's the ruling? Well, it's disqualification under Rule thirty-three dash seven, unless tee markers were placed before any player in the group, uh, plays from the tee and ground, in which case the penalty is modified from disqualification to loss of hole or, uh, two strokes. So one, and- so I think the key point is, um, or principle is in the second paragraph of the decision, that, uh, tells us why we want to treat movement of tee markers seriously. In view of the fact that tee markers initially fixed and when moved, can have a significant effect on the entire competition, uh, there can be various things. So tee markers, especially in stroke play competition, are extremely important, because in a stroke play event, where, let's say, you have a hundred and fifty-six players playing against each other, at the end of the round, you need to be able to ensure that you're comparing those scores on an equitable basis. And the bare bones of that means that they have started each hole at the same spot, finished each hole at the same spot- each hole at the same spot, same, same hole location, and that they played under the rules, that otherwise, you can't compare apples to apples. So that is why the movement of a tee marker is treated so seriously, that if a tee marker, say, in a stroke play competition, is moved, then all of a sudden, you're not comparing apples to apples at the end of the round. Some players play hole, start one hole from a different spot. So it's a serious business.
We have a question from online, and this actually pertains to some of our tournament. On certain holes, you'll have the black and blue, or blue and white, or all three tee-markers kind of placed together either vertically or horizontally. And, let's say, you know, one group is playing essentially the black tee-markers, and a different group is playing the white tee-markers, but they are placed together, essentially meaning that they're playing from the same tee-in ground. If I'm playing the black, and the whites are in front of that, could, the question is, could I then move the colored tee marker that is not the set I'm playing when they are placed together?
Okay, all right, that's a good question. So let's say, for example, you have two sets of tees, and let's say, on especially one hole, there's a small tee, tee-in area, and to make sure that the forward set of tees does not interfere with play from the back tees, often, they'll put, just put the two sets of tee-markers right next to each other. So let's say, as Bill's example, you have the white and black tee-markers, and they're right next to each other, whether parallel to the hole, or perpendicular to, to the hole. So the question is, if you're playing from the black tee-markers, what's the status of the white tee-markers? In particular, if the white tee marker is where I would say I'd like to place my left foot, could I remove the white tee marker? And the answer there would be yes, because that white tee marker is not defining your tee-in ground, just the black tee-markers that define your tee-in ground, even though they are, they are put together there.
This is a personal question from Corset. In listening to that, would you then set the markers perpendicular to the hole? Or if you were putting them together, would you put them parallel to the line of play?
Yeah, I'm trying to think, because I've, I've done that at Aaron Hills, I'm trying to remember what I did. Uh, I think I put them parallel, so with, say, with the green and white, with the green, with the white immediately in front of the green. And why I did that, I probably did it more for aesthetic reasons than anything else, because I think when you do it that way, it makes it a little easier to find that tee, and to identify that two tee-markers are there, when you look at it from the side. Because if you look at the other way from the side, you might not see the other tee-marker behind it.
I'm going to guess, then, a committee could not deem that the markers are one marker.
Um, well, I, I think the committee could, I-
I have the assumption of, of your putting, I have the assumption that that could be-
Yeah, and I, and I guess one question, because I, presumably, this happens only a few holes, because if it happened on every hole, then you'd just pick one color and go with that, you wouldn't have two sets out there. Could a committee deem the other one? Maybe they could, say, you know, where the white and black tee-markers are together, they are deemed to be one tee marker, it's deemed to be fixed, and deemed to be defined of tee-in grounds. You know, I, I guess they could, and I think that, and you have to weigh things from a committee's perspective, is that to say, one, that as we talked about, with, I think, definition of obstruction, sometimes it can be dangerous to deem something that's naturally not fixed to be fixed. But on the other hand, you might say, well, we'll take our chances with that, because we're more concerned with the tee-markers being removed, and having the threat of having to-
The question invariably, in practical terms, deals with teeing off in front of the markers. If I'm playing the black, and I have the black and white together, is the front of the tee the white, or is the front of the tee the middle of what you've set up, which is the front of the black?
Yeah, and I, and I think, if the committee hasn't said anything, hasn't adopted any special local rules, I think you still go by solely your tee-markers.
I don't understand that. The purpose of putting them together is to make the whole play the same distance from either green or white. In other words, that's the golf course that you're playing today. So therefore, why would, why wouldn't they be just one tee with two others?
Well, I think the way I'd look at it is, yeah, I think you, from my perspective, the purpose of putting them together is to make sure that the forward one is not in the way, that, say, if you have a small tee area, let's say, half the size of this room, where you don't want, have a tee marker just two yards in front, where it might get in the way of a play from the back. Because I think it's for that reason that you have them together. And if you want them to play the same, like I said, I think a committee could deem them by some sort of local rule, but I don't think, in the absence of a local rule, that it's that way. I think even in the absence of a local rule, if you're playing from the black tee-markers, that the black tee-markers still govern your tee-in grounds.
So in other words, it's up to the committee, it's up to the committee to differentiate the fact that it's one tee.
That would sound like the side-by-side, perpendicular, may not be the best aesthetic-looking, but it does answer all the rules.
Yeah, yeah, I, if, well, but even then, if you do the side-by-side, the perpendicular line of play, then, then the tee, no matter what you do, the tee-in ground is going to be different, a different size. And it's a question of, is it going to be a little bit longer, you know, is it, is one tee-in ground going to be six inches closer to the hole, or is one tee-in ground going to be six inches wider, perhaps?
And in a WSTA event, where you put those two together, if, under your analogy, the guys who are playing the black tees up at you, and half, and half of the horses would tee up improperly, they would all tee up, put their tee by the front tee, not necessarily if they were playing the black, behind the black that are sitting there, they're treating it all as one.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think, well, like you mentioned, say, that people instinctively go by the forward one, and then a lot of them would, playing from the back, would wind up teeing from outside the tee-in ground. I think that's, that's a valid point, that's a reason to, as Bill said, put them perpendicular, so at least they're the same distance. So, so the front edge is the same breach. I think that's a valid way to say it.
Well, they may be wider, the tee-in grounds, or narrower, depending on what set you're talking. I can't imagine someone's going to tee off outside the innermost tee marker, you know?
Yeah, right, and that's unlikely, but-
The answer, it sounds like, would be to have several made half and half.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that's what some courses, where, where they do that on a daily basis, they will paint those tee-markers half and half, which, which simplifies things. All right, eleven dash three, Calvin Oddle Rule, dealing with a specific situation, saying if a ball is not in play, meaning the player's not yet made a stroke at it, if it falls off the tee, or is knocked off a tee by the player while addressing it, may be re-teed without penalty. And that's, that makes sense, because the ball's not yet in play. However, if a stroke's made at the ball, even if the ball's moving, the stroke counts, but there is no penalty. And we'll see a little bit more of this under Rule fourteen, but just a very narrow set of circumstances where this rule can apply. Rule eleven dash four, playing from outside the tee-in ground. And this is broken up into match play and stroke play, and as we'll see, they have very different differences. It's somewhat similar to, well, actually, it's a little bit similar to what we saw with the difference in playing out of turn in match play versus playing out of turn in stroke play. And it's, and it's good to go, go through these, because the, I think this rule, among other things, really emphasizes the philosophical differences between match play and stroke play. In match play, if a player, when starting the hole, plays from outside the tee-in ground, there's no penalty, but the opponent may have him cancel or replay from within the tee-in ground. So first point, this applies only when starting play of the hole. So let's take a case where, let's say, Arnold and I are playing against each other, and I hit my tee shot out of bounds, and then I tee up and play another ball from outside the tee-in ground. Does, what's the ruling? Does this rule apply? The answer is no, because I'd already started play of the hole. I teed off from within the tee-in ground, and once I did that, Rule eleven dash four no longer applies for that hole.
I think you eliminated a word that's very important-
Okay.
-immediately.
Well, that, that, that's part of it, but let's say, right away, I hit it out of bounds, so we know, and let's just say, a few seconds later, I tee up and play from outside the tee-in ground. So the question is, what is, in my, in Arnold's My Pony sees me do that. So the question is, does Rule eleven dash four A apply? And what, first point is, no, eleven dash four A does not apply, because, once I played that first tee shot from within the tee-in ground, even though it went out of bounds, I've satisfied the requirements for Rule eleven dash four. I've started playing the hole from within the tee-in ground, so this rule no longer applies. But what I have done, though, is I have played from the wrong place. That Rule twenty-seven and Rule twenty dash five required me to play the ball under stroking distance from within the tee-in ground. By not doing that, I've played from the wrong place, which means the penalty is simply going to be loss of hole, that my opponent doesn't have the option to do anything, I've simply played from, played from the wrong place. So, first point is, this applies only to your first shot on the hole, when starting play of the hole. There's no penalty, but the opponent may immediately require the player to cancel and replay the stroke. So then, Ken, getting to your point with immediately, so let's say, Ken and I are playing a match, we tee off, and let's say, let's say, I have the honor at the third hole, and I play from outside the tee-in ground. And then Ken plays, and Ken hits, hits one of his rare, bad tee shots, and he says, "John, I wasn't going to say anything but give him the bad shot I just hit and the good shot you hit. You know, I noticed you played from outside the tee-in ground, I want you to cancel replay from within the tee-in ground." May he do that? The answer to that is no, because that would not be considered immediately, that in other, because, among other things, he don't play, he's only played from, applied to the tee-in ground, he went ahead and played, and as soon as he's done that, he's given up the right to call my stroke. So, all right, on to stroke play, which will be more involved, because in stroke play, as we said, we need to be able to compare apples to apples at the end of the round. When starting a hole, the player plays from outside the tee-in ground, he incurs a penalty of two strokes, and must play a ball from within the tee-in ground. If he plays from the next tee-in ground without first correcting the mistake, or if it's the last hole, leaves that putting green without declaring his intention to correct the mistake, he is disqualified. So first, remember, this applies only when starting a hole. So let's go over an example that, a question you might see, a type of question you might see on a quiz. Let's say, in stroke play, I tee off from within the tee-in ground, and I hit that tee shot out of bounds. I return to the tee, I tee up outside the tee-in ground, let's say, I tee up five feet in front of, or to the side, and play. What, and I hit that second tee shot in the fairway. What do I lie, or am I disqualified, or what?
Was your first one, was your first one played from within-
Yeah, my first tee shot is played from within the tee-in ground, that went out of bounds. When I go back under stroking distance, I play from just outside that tee-in ground, and hit that ball in the fairway. So what, what do I lie? All right, well, let's go, as we, as we'll talk about with, both with quizzes and with officiating, when you have to start counting things, it's helpful to keep track separately of the strokes actually made, and the penalty strokes incurred. So how many strokes has the player made? His original tee shot and the second tee shot, so he's made two strokes. How many penalty strokes has he incurred? One for going out of bounds, one for stroking distance, and then two more for playing from the wrong place. That under Twenty-seven dash one and Twenty dash five, he was required to play from within the tee-in ground, he didn't, so he's in breach of those rules. So in stroke play, two-stroke penalty, there's not a serious breach, so what should he do at that point? Continue to play. Exactly, at, at that point. So he does not, he is not required to correct that mistake. The requirement to correct that mistake applies only to the first tee shot, that he needs to get his, make sure he plays from within the tee-in ground. So now, let's say, next hole, I go up, and I just play from outside the tee-in ground. I, and the most, often, players will play from, who play from outside the tee-in ground will do so because they just go the wrong set of tees. Let's say, they're supposed to be playing from the green, green tee-markers, instead, they play from the whites. So by playing from the whites, there is Rule eleven dash five, playing from the wrong tee-in ground, and that's really just an extension of this rule, you just played from, perhaps, far, a good distance from outside the tee-in ground, but the same provisions apply. So what's the ruling? Instead of playing from the greens, I play from the whites, hit my tee shot, it's a two-stroke penalty, and I must correct that mistake before teeing off on the next hole. So when I go back to the green tee-markers, correct that mistake, and then say, I hit that shot into the fairway, what would I be lying? Then, I'd be lying three. I'd count the stroke made from the green tee-markers, and two penalty strokes under this rule, but I would not count the stroke I made from the white tee-markers.
Interesting, John, is that, let's say, you were like me and slow, and you, and you made that mistake two or three times, and then realized it, it's still only a two-shot penalty, correct?
Oh, so, so if on the same hole, you attempt several times to correct that mistake, and it still takes you a few times to get it right, that, that is a single penalty.
Like, so you hit, let's say, you're supposed to be playing from the whites, you play from the greens, and you hit a ball out of bounds, and you still don't realize you're on the wrong tee. You hit another ball that goes out of bounds, do this three or four times before you realize you're on the wrong tee, it's still only a two-shot penalty when you go back to the whites.
That's right, this one way to look at it is, this rule, as long as you, what this rule really cares about is that you start play of the hole from the tee-in ground, exactly. You know, once you breach the rule, it doesn't, the rule isn't that concerned with how everything you do wrong until you correct that mistake, largely.
Till you put ball in play, basically, right?
Yeah. Gary?
John, in, in match play, we're playing the white tees, and you mistake and legal the green tees and tee off, and you get the ball out of bounds.
Okay.
Now, I, as your opponent, because you hit it out of bounds, that stroke counts. When you hit your next shot, do you drop a ball on the green tee-in ground, or do you go back to the-
Okay, all right. The question is, Gary and I are playing a match, I have the honor, we're supposed to be playing from the white tees, instead, I tee off from the green tees, and I hit that ball out of bounds. Gary being who he is, and the fact that he's three down the turn, wants me to continue with that ball, does not want me to cancel replay in the correct order. So the question is, how do I proceed under the out-of-bounds rule? And you're right, in that case, I'd go back to where I just played from, in this case, not just general area of the green tee-markers, but the specific spot I played from, because I played from through the green, and I would drop the ball. I would drop a ball there. So you're right, I'm not allowed to tee it, since I'm not playing from the tee-in ground.
That's a good, that's a good example question.
So, we, we, this is the second situation we've come across, where in stroke play, a player is required to correct a mistake or be disqualified, with the first one being Rule three dash two, fair to hole out. And these, those two are the basic ones, that, and we'll come across three others, but they're the basic ones, as you said, ensure that in stroke play, everyone starts the hole from the same spot, and everyone finishes the hole at the same spot. That's the only equitable way to compare scores. And what's interesting is, when you look at the very different rulings in match play versus stroke play for this, it emphasizes the philosophical differences between those two forms of play, in that, in match play, really, the only players directly involved with that or affected by it are the players in the match. So if Bill and I are playing a match, we're the only ones affected by it. So that's why there can be these judgment calls about canceling or replaying a stroke, about concessions, about a concession of a stroke, and things like that. In stroke play, though, we're playing against possibly more than a hundred other people, and they're not all represented there, and don't all have a voice in saying, well, do we want John to cancel replay? Do we want to concede him that ten-inch putt, or what? That's why in stroke play, there are no concessions, and in stroke play, if you play from outside the tee-in ground, you have to correct that mistake. And then eleven dash five, we talked about, is really just an extension of eleven dash four. So looking at the decisions, we touched on eleven dash two slash two, I guess that's just, it's, it's helpful- it's helpful to review that and just to know- and specifically to know that it's, uh, there, that it covers, uh, five different scenarios. Um, let's see, with Gary's question, decision eleven dash five slash three, ball played out of bounds, wrong tee-in-ground, not recalled, uh, goes into the procedure for how that, uh, ball would be put into play under, uh, stroking distance. The rest of the decisions are relatively straightforward. Any questions on rule eleven there? Okay, uh, we'll, uh, go over rule twelve, and then we'll, uh, take a break before we tackle thirteen. Uh, rule twelve, uh, which, uh, deals with, uh, finding the ball and then identifying it. First, uh, twelve dash one talks about seeing the ball and searching for the ball. Starts with establishing the principle that a player's not necessarily entitled to see his ball when making a stroke. So, that explains, for example, that if, say, you're playing a ball under a tree, and a branch intervenes between, say, your eyes and the ball, and as a result, you can't see the ball, you're not really entitled to move that branch out of the way, because you're not entitled, uh, to see- see the ball. And the second paragraph is, uh, is sort of interesting. It, uh, confirms that the player's allowed to touch all these items, long grass, bush, bushes, and so forth, but only to the extent necessary to find and identify the ball, as long as, basically, he doesn't breach rule thirteen dash two, uh, that he- he's not allowed to go in willy-nilly, uh, just under the guise of searching for his ball. He's still not allowed to improve, uh, anything. And if the ball is moved while searching for it, uh, rule eighteen dash two A, which we'll cover next week, applies, which, uh, will involve a one-stroke penalty for the player and require him to replace the ball. But, there are some exceptions to that penalty that we'll go over in the specific sub clauses of this rule. All right, so in addition to the normal methods of searching for the ball, here are some special ones, uh, uh, some special permission that this rule, uh, provides. First, in searching for or identifying a ball covered by sand, and the first point with this, uh, rule is that this applies anywhere on the course, not just in a bunker. It also applies in water hazards, also applies through the green. Um, if a player's ball in anywhere on the course is believed to be covered by sand, to the extent that he can't find the ball, or he can see the ball, but he can't identify it, and that's one thing to note with, uh, these- with clause A and clause B, is that this applies both to finding the ball as well as to identifying it. He's allowed to touch or move the sand, uh, to find the ball or to identify it. So, that means, for example, if you see part- say, part of a ball buried in sand, whether it's in a bunker or a sand dune, uh, that you don't necessarily have to lift the ball under rule twelve dash two to identify. If you want to take your finger to remove some of the sand to see, uh, if that's enough to identify the ball, you're allowed to do that. Uh, if the ball is found and identified, it says, "The player must recreate the lie as nearly as possible by replacing the sand." Now, if the ball is moved, uh, during the touching or moving of sand while searching for identifying, there's no penalty, and the ball must be replaced and the lie recreated. Now, one interesting point, uh, and it wa- now, it goes on saying, recre- recreating the lie under this rule, player's permitted to leave a small part of the ball as visible. So, if the ball is completely, uh, covered by sand in a bunker, the player probes for it, finds it, when he replaces the ball with the lie, he's allowed to leave a small part, say, about the size of the tip of your little finger, uh, visible. So, one point that's interesting to note with this is that ordinarily, uh, under rule twenty dash three B, you talk about recreating a lie only in a bunker. But, this is one, uh, one of the rare spots where you will actually recreate a lie outside of a bunker. So, this applies to sand anywhere. So, even through the green, say, in the san- uh, sand dune, uh, you would still, uh, follow this procedure and recreate, uh, the lie. So, this does allow the player a fair amount of leeway, but the alternative, i- if this did not exist, would mean any time you hit your ball in the sand and it completely buries, you would have to make a choice between either, uh, accepting the penalty for a lost ball, or accepting one-stroke penalty for searching for your ball, uh, for mov- moving your ball while searching for it. This rule allows the player both to move the sand and, uh, uh, protects him from penalty in case the ball is moved. So, it is a, uh, player-friendly provision. All right, clause B, searching for identifying the ball covered by loose impediments in a hazard. So, this, uh, applies specifically, uh, to a ball in a hazard, so a bunker or water hazard, and specifically with loose impediments, the most common example of which is, uh, leaves. The player, uh, if it's covered to the extent that the player can't find or identify it, he's allowed to, uh, touch or move loose impediments. If the ball is found, the player must replace the loose impediments. Then, if the ball is moved, well, this is gonna be different now. Rule eighteen dash two A applies, meaning the player will incur one penalty stroke and must replace the ball. If the ball is moved during the replacement of loose impediments, though, is in that case, he's doing what this rule requires him to do. There is no penalty, and the ball must be replaced. If the ball was- was entirely covered by loose impediments, the player must recover the ball, but is permitted to leave a small part of the ball visible, just as he was able to do with sand. So, co- again, common application, playing in the fall, a number of leaves have collected in a bunker. You think your ball is in a bunker. This rule allows you to touch or remove the leaves to find your ball, but you do need to be careful, because if you- if you move the ball, yeah, you are going to be penalized one stroke and must replace the ball. So, this rule treats the search for a ball covered by leaves exactly the same way, say, in a hazard, as it does through the green. So, if you're searching for your ball just in the rough, uh, on a fall day covered with leaves, and- and you move the ball, well, that's going to be a penalty. So, now, the same provision applies in a hazard. Now, with that. Twelve dash one C, uh, searching for a ball in water- in a water hazard. So, specific applications, not just anywhere in a water hazard, specifically in water in a water hazard, that the player has, uh, some leeway. The player may probe for it with a club or otherwise, and that's, uh, an important, uh, provision, because normally, a player's not allowed to touch, uh, water in the water hazard with his club. If the ball, uh, is in water, and the ball is accidentally moved while probing, there is no penalty. The ball must be replaced unless the player likes to per- to take relief under the water hazard rule. If the moved ball was not lying in water, or the ball was accidentally moved by the player other than while probing, then, under rule eighteen dash two A, the player will incur a penalty stroke and must replace the ball. So, let's look at, uh, with all that in mind, look at on the facing page, uh, decision twelve dash one slash five. The player is probing first ball in water in a water hazard, and he accidentally kicks the ball, which is in fact lying in long grass on the bank within, uh, the hazard. What's the ruling? Well, as the ball was not in water in the water hazard, uh, rule twelve dash one C will not protect the player from penalty, so rule eighteen dash two A applies, uh, which imposes a one-stroke penalty on the player and requires him to replace the ball. Twelve dash one D, uh, if a player's, uh, accidentally moves the ball while searching for it in an obstruction, that could be movable or immovable, uh, or an abnormal ground condition, such as ground under repair, casual water, or whole cat, maybe a burning animal, and so forth. Uh, there's no penalty, and the ball must be replaced unless the player winds up taking relief, uh, from that. So, why in this case is the player, uh, given some leeway and not penalized for moving the ball? Because these are i- areas from which the player is already entitled to relief without penalty. Uh, so, it makes sense, therefore, if he search- search- is being- we know if he finds his ball in there, he can go ahead and take a leaf without penalty. So, it makes sense not to penalize him for moving it while, uh, searching for such an area. So, penalty for breach of this rule is loss of hole or two strokes. And this is, I think we talked about, a good exercise to go through, but any time you see a penalty statement, stop and think up some examples as to how a player could incur that general penalty. So, what are some ways, under this rule, that a player could incur the general penalty? Be- and this is an especially good one to use, but it's not readily apparent. But, so far, we've just talked about the occasional one-stroke penalty under rule eighteen dash two A for ball. So, how could a player incur the loss of hole or two-stroke penalty under this rule? Well, look back, what are some requirements that the pla- uh, this rule imposes on the player? Uh, recreating the lie under rule twelve dash one A. So, if a player does not recreate the lie, he is in breach of this rule. Uh, if he, uh, under, say, twelve dash, uh, one B, uh, replacing the loose impediments. If he doesn't replace the loose impediments, he is in breach of this rule. So, those are- are some examples. Now, twelve dash two, uh, which governs when a player has actually, uh, found the ball, but also, let's remember that twelve dash one allows him some extra, um, uh, permission to identify the ball, specifically once covered in sand or covered by loose impediments in a hazard. So, uh, the rule starts by, uh, really repeating rule six dash five, reminding the player that he is responsible for playing the, uh, proper ball and encouraging him an identification mark on the ball. So, if a player believes the ball at rest might be his, but he can't identify it merely by looking at it, in other words, the only way he could identify it would be to lift it, he may lift the ball for identification, uh, without penalty, but he needs to follow a specific, uh, process. And this process is similar, but not identical to the process under rule five dash three, uh, through which a player would lift his ball to determine if it's unfit for play. Before lifting the ball, a player must announce i- his intention to do so to his opponent or fellow competitor. He must mark the position of the ball, and then he may lift the ball to identify it. Um, but when he does so, he needs to give the opponent or fellow competitor an opportunity to observe the lifting and replacement. And then, this is really where it differs from rule five dash three. The ball must not be cleaned beyond the extent necessary for identification when lifted under this rule. If, as we saw in rule five dash three, the player, uh, is not allowed to clean the ball at all, unless it was lifted from the putting green. But, under this rule, he's allowed to clean it- clean enough to identify. So, why the distinction between this rule and rule five dash three? It- the reason is that under rule five dash three, there is no penalty for playing a ball that's unfit for play, whereas, there is a penalty for playing a ball that's not yours. So, if you're going to penalize a player for playing a wrong ball, you have to let him take steps to ensure that he does not play the wrong ball, by lifting and- and identifying the ball. Now, if the ball is the player's ball, and he fails to comply with all or any part of this procedure, or if he lifts the ball for identification without having good reason to do so. So, this could be an example. I know we talked about, uh, last time, about players who might lift the ball under rule five dash three, just to try to reposition the cob of mud on the ball or something like that. That if, uh, a player, uh, say, hits his ball from the tee, which we know it ha- it has to be his ball, hits it two hundred yards straightaway in the fairway, there's n- no other ball comes anywhere near it, and he says, "Gee, I'm not sure this is my ball," and so forth, that, uh, and he- that you- you can make the case that if he didn't ha- that he did not have good reason to lift it, and therefore would incur, uh, one penalty stroke. And likewise, as we saw in rule five dash three, if a player gets all or any one part of that, uh, lifting procedure wrong, he incurs, uh, one penalty stroke. And then, this is where- where it gets interesting, but, uh, for- for a reason. If the lifted ball, uh, is the player's ball, he must replace it. If he fails to do so, incurs the general penalty, um, for breach of this rule, but no additional penalty. So, given that, what is the ruling if, let's say, I spray my tee-shot into the rough, I go over there, I find a ball, think it's mine, and without telling Bill, my fellow competitor, I lift it, I don't mark its position, I lift it, and it turns out it's not my ball. Uh, what's the penalty in that case? In that case, there- there's no penalty. That the penalty for not following the procedure applies only if it's my ball. In other words, a good way to look at this is, rule twelve dash two is there to protect the player from penalty under eighteen dash two A for lifting his ball in play when otherwise he does- he doesn't have authority. So, it's there to protect the player from rule eighteen dash two A, but if the ball is not the player's ball, then there can't be any penalty under eighteen dash two A. The only time there could be a penalty to anyone would be, say, if in four-ball play, if it were my partner's ball, and I didn't follow the procedure, then my partner, the owner of the ball would be penalized. Or, if in match play, if it turns out to be my opponent's ball, uh, and I lifted it without following this procedure, then I would be, uh, penalized. So, really, again, look at this procedure as protecting you from penalty under, uh, just rule eighteen in, uh, general. As we saw, and so if a player does not follow the procedure, and he winds up incurring the general penalty for breach of this rule, so how could he incur the general penalty? Well, what one example would be, if he does not correctly replace the ball. If he places it in a wrong place and place from it, or if he substitutes balls. This rule requires him to replace the ball, but if he puts a different ball back down, he'd incur the general penalty for this, and, uh, but he would not also incur a penalty stroke for breaching, for not following the procedure.
And then, not announcing as well, right, and giving the-
Yeah.
-and the fellow competitor or opponent an opportunity to observe.
Yeah, tha- tha- that's right. Yeah, that would all be part of the procedure.
Wrong, it's still only one penalty stroke.
No, tha- that's right. You can get all- all of- entire procedure wrong and still incur only one penalty stroke.
You can get the en- but if you get the entire procedure wrong, and you, uh, drop it instead of place it, then it's only two penalty strokes, right?
It's a general penalty. If you-
It's a general penalty.
If you get the entire procedure wrong, and then you drop it instead of place it, then, you're right, you would encourage just the general penalty. So, in stroke play, it'd be a total penalty of two strokes.
One plus one plus one plus two equals two.
Oh, y- yeah, yeah, yeah. I- I guess I- I would look at it more from the perspective of, that the procedure, it's an all-or-nothing proposition. You either get all the procedure right, or you get, whether you get one or every aspect of it wrong, it's one penalty stroke.
That's a much easier way to think about it.
All right, so let's look at a few, uh, decisions here. See, we touched- we- we looked at twelve dash one slash five, and really, there are only five decisions under this rule. The others are relatively straightforward. I think, uh, the last decision, twelve dash two slash two, shows why- or is a good example of why it's, uh, helpful to know the rules, that here, a player, uh, thinks he's doing the right thing, when in fact he's, uh, not. So, uh, any questions on, uh, rule twelve there?
I have a question on twelve, one.
Okay.
You're playing in the fall on a golf course with a lot of trees, and there's a lot of leaves in an area that are not- that haven't been removed. Would it be legitimate, um, call it, um, ground under repair, and treat it as you would, um, ground, um, placed for removal?
Okay, okay. Yeah, I- I think that's a goo- good question. If you're playing in the fall, obviously, often you'll come across a lot of leaves. Oh, that's a good reason, Ken, why you should come play at Aaron Hills in the fall. If I can- if I can make a plug for that, because that's- that's- that's one issue we don't have to deal with, and that's leaves.
I can watch.
So- so the question is, and I suppose there are two different ways to- to look at. That, as Bill said, it can depend as to what- who's doing the pile. A lot of times, the, uh, maintenance staff will just blow the leaves to a- into a certain area, uh, with the intention of blowing them and then eventually h- removing them. So, have they been piled for removal in such a case? You know, ultimately, it's up to the committee to say, but I'd say in that case, when the, uh, maintenance staff has dr- has intentionally blown or placed leaves in this area, and they intend to pick them up, I'd say, yes, that, uh, therefore meets the definition automatically of, uh, ground under repair. of, uh, ground under repair. But so, sometimes you can have a case where, say, in hollows and so forth, there was the wind, leaves just naturally collect there, and it's just, you just have six inches of leaves there, and that's just the way it is. Uh, in such a case, that's not automatically ground under repair, the committee could say that, and there is a decision under 33-8 that goes into, that authorizes a committee to declare temporary accumulation of leaves to be ground under repair, but as you can imagine, there's, could be a fair amount of gray area in applying that in terms of, you know, starting with, well, what exactly is the dimension, the margin of this area?
Yeah, where do you take your drop in it? And that's why I thought, if you treated it like ground, uh, place for removal, then you could just assume, well, okay, this is where the leaves are, this is where my ball entered, da-da-da, or this is the closest place, something like that. And I, I guess the purpose of my question is, I deem it to be totally unfair, to be looking for your ball and leaves and then move the ball. And to me, that's just not what golf is all about. And, uh, so, and yet, for the purpose of pace of play, it would seem to me that that would be a logical thing to do.
Well, you're right, i- i- it is an issue, but so sometimes, um, you know, yeah, I, you know, realistically, how do you write the rules necessarily to cover that? And for example, when you want, you want to treat October golf different from July golf in terms of the leeway for searching for, for your ball. And to some degree, and with, and this is not at all intended to sound, um, I guess, snobby, uh, thing to say, is that, you know, you're just drawing off someone else, but to some degree, it's a, it's maintenance issue. That, uh, there's some, sometimes in the rules that you've talked about, that there's not, it's not necessarily a rules of golf issue, that it's, uh, really a golf course architecture issue with where some tees are in hazards, getting across hazards and so forth. Um, but it's, uh, tough, and, you know, that some cynics would say, well, there tend not to be great accumulation of leaves in the fairway, and obviously, that, we know there can be a lot of leaves in the fairways, but there tend to be more leaves, uh, where there are trees, and trees usually are in the middle of the fairways. And Ken, for some reason, I could be wrong, but I imagine you don't miss many fairways.
Well.
Am I right?
That's why they shut down Medina Number Three on the first of October.
Okay, any, anything else on, uh, Rule 12 there? If not, why don't, you know, why don't we go ahead and take a, uh, say, 11-minute break, and we'll resume at 9:45 with Rule 13. Just since Rule 13's a big one, let's, uh, take a little break beforehand.
Okay.
All right. We'll resume with Rule 13, which, as we've mentioned, is a big, big rule because it, more than any other rule, uh, underlines the pr- uh, basic principles behind the game of, uh, specifically the principle of playing the course as you find it and not adjusting the course to suit your needs. Uh, and Rule, uh, 13-1, uh, spec- it actually states the principle, the ball must be played as it lies, except as otherwise provided in the rules. And we'll see, uh, obviously, there are a number of exceptions to that with relief from immovable obstructions, ground under repair, and water hazards and so forth. So sometimes relief with penalty, sometimes relief without penalty. But that is the, uh, general principle. All right, Rule 13-2, which is the one that really talks about playing the course as you find it. Uh, and this is a, uh, big rule, consists of two large sentences, and pro- the best, or the most important point to realize with this rule, to, to understand it, is that it consists of three sections, and they are all related, but just realizing that there are three separate sections, uh, can help, and can go a long way toward, uh, understanding this rule. The first section, uh, takes us through those first bullet points, uh, lists the areas that a player is not allowed to improve. The second section, which is the next five bullet points, lists the actions that the player is not allowed to take to improve, uh, those areas. And it's very important to remember that those two are linked. Then in other words, if a player improves his line of play by taking some action that's not included in the second section, then there's no breach of this rule. So an example being, uh, a player whose ball lies through the green and he moves a leaf that's, uh, three inches in front of his ball. He has improved his line of play, but there's no prohibition in the second section against improving it by removing loose impediments, so therefore he's okay. So it has to be, so the only time there's a breach is when one of these protected areas from Section 1 is improved by this, by a specific act listed here in Section 2. And then, to complicate things a little bit, we have a number of exceptions. So the third section, uh, is a list of exceptions to say that even if you have improved one of the protected areas by taking one of the prohibited actions, there's no penalty if that occurred in these, uh, circumstances. So, yeah, keep in mind, again, three separate, uh, sections that all, uh, relate to each other i- in the rule. And before, and so let's go back up and, uh, go through the sections one by one. The first section of the, uh, protected areas, which talk about the position or lie of the ball, area of intended stance or area of intended swing, line of play, or reasonable extension of that line beyond the hole. That latter part, a reasonable extension beyond the hole, would mean, for example, that a player may not repair damage just beyond the hole in case he's concerned that his, uh, ball goes beyond the hole, so he won't have to putt back through that. He's also not allowed to improve the area in which he's to drop or place a ball. Uh, so for, for example, uh, those of you who've been to PGA, USGA rules workshops know that there's this really great video clip, uh, of a player taking a leaf from a cart path, and before he does so, he takes his foot and stamps down the ground on clumps of grass for, for the purpose of improving the area in which he's to drop a ball. So that would be a breach.
Ken, excuse me, what is, what is loose turf as opposed to a loose impediment?
Oh, what, what?
There is a difference when you, when you read this. I think it's good, am I saying it right, loose turf or?
They start out in the second section where we talk about, uh, well, the sec- second section, the fourth bullet point, talks about sand, loose soil.
Loose soil, I guess.
Okay. And loose soil is, uh, different from sand, in that loose soil is just a, it's, it's loose soil, it's, it's, uh, dirt that, and in many cases, it might be part of a, a hole that's been dug, maybe by a buring animal, maybe by the greenkeeper, something like, like that.
Well, it's not a, it's not in any way, shape, or form a divot.
Uh, divots, well, it goes on to say, well, let's see, uh, where does it talk about?
We look top.
Replaced divots or other cut turf. Um, so, uh, a divot, or, there is a distinction between a replaced divot and a loose div- a loose divot is a loose impediment, and that's not loose soil, it's, uh, compacted, uh, soil. It's got, I, and the, one way to think of it is loose soil is something that, if you hold it, it would just kind of fall through your fingers, if you open your fingers.
Much different than sand.
Yeah, yeah, so similar to sand, but something that strictly speaking is not sand.
Excuse me.
Yeah. And what, before we leave this first section, this, the areas that are protected by this rule, a very important word in that first line is player must not improve. And there is a helpful decision that was added, Decision 13-2/0.5, uh, that was added back in 2012, that goes a long way to, uh, helping us, uh, understand and apply this that, because it really answers the question of what does improve mean? And there are two ways you could have looked at, saying, well, improve just means to change for the better, or, as the decision says in the, uh, first sentence of the answer, uh, improve means to change for the better so that the player gains a potential advantage. So you have to have both, uh, elements, that, uh, sometimes there can be minute improvements that do, that are not sufficient in scale to result in a potential advantage, in which case there would, uh, not be an improvement and therefore would not be a breach, uh, of, of this rule. Uh, so, and the decision goes on to list some examples of actions that, uh, are unlikely to create a potential advantage and therefore would not constitute an improvement, and then examples of, uh, changes that are likely to create a potential advantage and therefore would be an improvement. So the first one, that you, you may rec- uh, many of you may recall, 2003 at, um, the Kemper Open, uh, TBC at Avonel, finding around Duffy Waldorf on the 12th holes in the fairway, wet conditions, about 175 yards out, and he, uh, taps down a pitch mark that was about a yard in front of and slightly to the right, uh, of his ball. So the question, first question is, was that on his line of play? And after going back and forth, the tour official said, yes, that was on his line of play. So then the next question is, okay, did he improve his line of play? Keep in mind, this decision did not exist until 2012, nine years later. So there really wasn't any specific guidance in the rules or decisions as to what was meant by improve. So, uh, the officials did what I think, you know, every other official had done, were, were, and said that improvement at that time meant better, that his line of play is now better. And now, but you step back from that example and say, well, does that result, makes sense? Do we have a tour player in the fairway, he caps down a pitch mark five feet in front of and to the right of his ball? Has he really benefited from that? Obviously not. So that's, uh, why this decision is so helpful, because it, uh, makes a distinction now to say that in such a case, that is not a breach of the rule, becau- of this rule because it's, he's not considered to have improved his line of play, this tapping down that pitch mark did not, uh, really create a potential advantage for him. Now, it's not to say that the player has free rein to repair pitch marks anywhere, and that, if you put him in a different situation where his ball is now up near the green, and he's thinking about chipping or putting onto the green, and there's a pitch mark between his ball and the green, then it's more likely that, uh, the repair of that pitch mark would create a potential advantage for him and would therefore, uh, be a breach. So that's an important, uh, element that, and it's the starting point for any question relating with Rule 13-2, is first to say, uh, well, it's a combination, they can say, okay, was one of these areas affected, one of these protected areas affected, and if so, was it actually improved? If the answer to either of those is no, then, uh, you don't need to look at the rest of Rule 13-2. And we, we won't go through all the examples in this decision, but the end, it has, the decision has a, uh, makes an important point, saying, to say, the determination as to whether a player's gained a potential advantage is made by reference to the situation immediately prior to his stroke. So in other words, that the decision is made before the player hits the stroke, makes the stroke, and you have to disregard whatever he does as part of that decision. So let's say, for example, in the Duffy Waldorf case, with he's hitting a six iron, he repairs the pitch mark five feet from his ball. And, and at that time, before he plays, you call for ruling, you say, okay, I don't think there's any potential advantage gained, no breach. And then he hits some awful shot, hits six inches behind the ball, and that ball actually dribbles over their pitch mark he just repaired. Well, in that case, he gets lucky, uh, that the result of the stroke does not, uh, enter into the determination of whether there's a breach. The, the decision of whether there's a breach is made before the, the stroke is actually made. It's what, it's what the rule concerns itself with, is the potential advantage that could be gained, not actual advantage that is gained. All right, so those, first section, those are the areas that are, the player may not improve, but he's only prohibited from improving those with the following acts. Uh, pressing a club on the ground, moving, bending, or breaking anything growing, say, uh, a tree branch or fixed. So we talked about tee markers, uh, also with an immovable obstruction, objects that define out of bounds. Player may not improve one of those areas by creating or eliminating an irregularity of surface. So ele- and ele- and some examples of eliminating an irregularity of surface would be the repair of a pitch mark, or the replacement of a, a divot in a divot hole. Uh, player is not allowed to remove or press down sand, loose soil, replaced divots or other cut turf, such as sod, placed in position, and may not improve these areas by removing due cost or water. So, uh, many of those, uh, items are fairly straightforward. Now, Andy, we won't talk about, ask you to elaborate on replaced divots, uh, with that, uh, but, uh, so that's what the, so the player may not take one of these actions to improve one of the areas protected in Section 1, but there are some exceptions to that. And grounding the club lightly when addressing the ball. So we saw that, from Section 1, a player may not improve the lie of the ball. Section 2, we said that he can't, but by pressing a club on the ground. But then, Section 3, we say, well, wait a minute, there's no penalty if that improvement occurs while lightly grounding the club when addressing the ball. So let's say a player, you're in the Pine, Pinehurst area, uh, naturally sandy area, player hits his ball out in the sandy area through the green, not in a bunker, and he grounds the club lightly behind the ball, he doesn't press the club into the ground, and when he does so, he does, uh, from the way of the club, some of the, uh, small mound behind the ball becomes a little less pronounced. So enough where you could say, okay, he has improved the lie of the ball or the area of his intended swing. Would there be a breach of this rule? And the answer is no, as long as, uh, the grounding of the club was done lightly while addressing the ball. In that case, there'd be no penalty, even though it's improvement. And fairly taking his stance. And this is a, a big concept that has its own decision, uh, almost a full-page decision, 13-2, uh, slash 1, that there's no penalty if a player improves, for example, the area of his intended swing when playing from under a tree, if that improvement occurred while he was fairly taking a stance. So what does fairly taking the sta- stance, uh, mean? In the highlights, in the first sentence of the, uh, or in the first paragraph of the answer, sorry, with the second, uh, sentence, the use of fairly is intended to limit the player to, uh, to what is reasonably necessary to take a stance for the selected stroke without unduly improving the position of the ball, lie, uh, area of intended stance or swing or line of play. And this is the key. Thus, in taking a stance for the selected stroke, the player should select the least intrusive, underlying least intrusive course of action which results in the, and I underline this, minimum improvement, minimum improvement in, in the position or lie of the ball, et cetera. So in other words, it's still up to the player to determine, and that's used the example of a player under a tree, it's up to the player to determine what type of stroke he's going to play. For example, is he going to play it left-handed or right-handed, which direction he's going to play in, uh, and, uh, so forth. But then, once he makes that determination, it's his responsibility to get the, his body in that, in position to make that stroke, uh, causing the least amount, uh, the least, uh, disturbance to the tree, resulting in the minimum improvement to say the area of his intended swing. So, and then the decision goes on to list some examples of acts that do and do not constitute fairly taking a stance. So the first one, the first set deal with examples where there'd be no penalty. Backing into a branch of young sapling, if that is the only way to take a stance for the selected stroke, even if that causes the branch to move out of the way of the sapling to bend or break. Uh, the second section, uh, examples of acts that, uh, would result in a breach.
John, you may ask a question. Um, the, during the rules class, I remember them showing a video where a player, um, was a, was addressing his ball, and there was neither an out-of-bounds fence or a stake where, uh, where he would be bending that stake. And so, um, and if I recall correctly, that is permissible because you're fairly taking your stance under the least intrusive way, and that stake was bent, but, but out-of-bounds markers are deemed to be fixed. So, um, so, so if he broke that stake, unlike breaking a sapling, if he breaks a sapling- So, so, so if he broke that stake, unlike breaking a sapling, if he breaks a sapling, it's no penalty, fairly taking your stance in the least intrusive manner, but if he broke the out-of-bound stake, taking your stance in the least intrusive manner, would that be a penalty?
All right, all right, good question, Phil. Is there a difference in how you apply this rule to a boundary stake and say, a small tree? That's essentially the question. And the answer really is no, to retreat exactly the same. So, if you're allowed, and so if you bend or break a sapling while fairly taking your stance, there's no penalty, and likewise, if you bend or break a boundary stake while fairly taking your stance, there is no penalty. So, but the big question in each example is, were you in fact fairly taking your stance? Because you could argue, especially with, say, some, occasionally with a boundary stake that's in the middle of a field without any trees, so you can approach it from the ball from any direction, is to say, okay, this is the stroke I want to play, so how can you get your body in that position for the stroke by doing the least, by, with the least impact on the boundary stake? And usually, usually, that will mean little, if any, movement to the boundary stake. But, but let's take the case where the boundary stake is back near some trees, and there just aren't many options as to how to approach it. Let's say you take your stance, and let's say, just for simplicity, that you do fairly take your stance, and the boundary stake completely snaps, or it just completely comes up. Is there a penalty? There is, since you were fairly taking your stance, there's no penalty. So, so that's the key. Either, either way, it's still, were you fairly taking your stance? And if you were, then whatever happens, if the stake happens.
I would think, just because there's, there seems to be a contradiction, because the definition of a boundary stake is, it's a fixed object. There should be some reference to that in this decision.
Well, and I, I think, in the rule itself, it refers to that, where it talks about moving, bending, or breaking anything growing or fixed, including immovable obstructions and objects defined out of bounds. So, it does alert us to that potential there.
All right.
All right, so with, so with that decision, you know, let's see, let's go over one example of an act that would not constitute fairly taking a stance, and therefore would be a breach of this rule. Yeah, I, I think the last bullet points, and especially a helpful one, bending and interfering branch with the hands, the leg, or the body, and taking a stance when the stance could have been taken without bending the branch. And that ties into what Phil said, that if, is there another way to take the stance without, without moving the branch or moving the boundary stake? If there is, then the player needs to use that method. All right, back to the third section of Rule thirteen dash two, with the exceptions, in making a stroke or the backward movement of the club for the stroke, and the stroke is made. So, let's go back to the definition of stroke, which remember is only the forward movement of the club with the intention of striking the ball. So, the backswing is not part of the stroke. But this means that if the player, you know, if we look at decision thirteen dash two slash nine, lie through the green, improve when sand behind the ball removed by backswing. Player's ball is in a sandy area through the green, and there's a mound of sand a few inches behind the ball. Takes the stroke, and in the process, removes man, mound of sand behind the ball on his backswing, improving his lie. Is he subject to penalty? Answer is no, provided he's not grounded the club more than lightly, and he took a normal backswing. So, because this happened during the backward movement of the club, and the stroke is made, that's an exception, there's no penalty. Now, what if he had removed the sand with his backswing, and that he became flustered and stopped? Then there would have been a penalty. So, for you players out there, if you do something like that during your backswing, just keep your concentration up and keep swinging. But this, this decision is one, and it's important to know the distinction that what, I remember when I first started learning the rules, this would confuse me, because here's a case where you remove a pile of sand with your backswing, and there's no penalty. Key in this situation is this ball lies through the green. Now, let's say a player's ball lies in a bunker, and during his backswing, he brushes the sand. He doesn't even move, doesn't even prove anything, he just touches the sand with his backswing to play a bunker shot. Is there a penalty in that case?
Yes.
Answer is yes.
Even if that mound of sand was created by a burrowing animal?
Even if my mound of sand was created by a burrowing animal, it was bottom line, is he touched the ground in the hazard before he strokes his downswing. So, keep in mind the distinction between those two cases, that it doesn't always mean that if you touch sand with your backswing, there's always going to be a penalty, or there always won't be a penalty. I need to put it in context. Next one, in creating or eliminating irregularities of surface within the tee ground, or removing dew from water from the tee ground. So, if a player's playing early in the morning, and let's say the tees haven't been mowed, and he wants to take his towel and mop up some dew from where he wants to take his stance inside the tee ground, he's allowed to do that, by this exception. On the putting green, the player's allowed to remove sand in loose soil, say, even if that would improve his line of play, and as well as he's allowed to repair certain damage, specifically a ball mark or an old hole plug. So, that is covered under Rule sixteen dash one, we'll see. All right, so, and we'll go through some decisions under Rule thirteen dash two, but very big rule and very important rule, and especially the concept of fairly taking your stance is one of the harder ones to apply when officiating, that whenever you have a player under a tree, often it can be a good thing to, before the player goes under there, just to remind him that you're there, and tell him if he has any questions as to what he's allowed to do, to ask you, and most players will appreciate that, and often you can kind of walk through that together as to what's allowed.
Why is Rule thirteen dash two silent on integral parts of the court?
Why is it silent on integral parts of the course? Oh, yeah, it's opposed to where it mentions objects that define out of bounds? Uh, I think, well, I think it contemplates that that's not an exhaustive list, just by saying, including immovable obstructions and objects that define out of bounds. Because, for example, it also doesn't mention tee markers, so it's, I don't know, a few things, and perhaps it felt, for the sake of brevity, but sometimes, there's a fine line sometimes between including specific references to help the reader versus including too many to confuse him and make him lose track of the main point of the rule.
Reason why I ask this, a couple of courses that we have tournaments on where there are rock walls, which are really rocks piled, torn walls, and then the answer is, can I move those rocks which are loose, or have become loose, from around those integral parts of the court?
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, and I think that's a good point, that if the committee, it's not a bad idea of the committee, since it already has to write a local rule saying that those stone walls are integral parts of the course, to go ahead and clarify that all stones on them are deemed to be fixed, or something like that, just as a reminder.
Yeah. Most of this rule talks about a ball that's been played. So, I hit a ball in trees, through the green, but in trees, and where there is a bunch of dead trees, and I know I'm going to take two club length, up to two club length.
Okay.
To what degree can I eliminate the regularity in the area in which I'm, which I think I may drop the ball?
Well, what this would say is that, so for, and you're saying you haven't yet identified where, where you say you have identified where you want to drop it.
Well, I haven't, I, I don't, I, well, I know I'm going to take an unplayable lie, and I'm going to, and I'm going to be in amongst some dead, some not dead brush.
Okay.
Because it's undergrown, and there's, there's down trees and stuff. So, if I can't, I mean, I realize I can probably pick up a loose impediment where I'm going to drop it. How much can I afford to, to clear the area where I think I may want, want to drop, so I have a shot?
Yeah, well, I, I think, you know, you hit, the question is, when a player is his ball into a bad area, and he's going to deem it unplayable, what may he do, say, he wants to use the two club length option, what may he do to the ground before he drops the ball? And first, you know, as you said, you're, he's allowed to remove any and all loose impediments from the area, that, that that's okay, that even though that is an improvement, the removal of loose impediments is not a prohibited action, so he's allowed to do that. But what he can't do is, for example, eliminate irregularities of surface, so to smooth out any bumps and things like that. Or, with the second bullet point, moving, bending, or breaking anything growing or fixed, he can't tap, stamp down tall grass, for, for example, in that area. If, is the key there is that, you're right, even though a lot of this rule deals with the ball in play, that final bullet point in the first section is that it also, the rule also protects the area in which he is to drop the ball. So, it does, the rule does contemplate such a situation. What's interesting, and relates a little bit to that, and shows the difference between the two rules, but also shows how they work together well, is with Rule one dash two that we started out talking with two weeks ago, where, when the example we gave is a player's taking relief from, let's say it's an unplayable situation like yours, and he's going to drop it in two club lengths of where the ball lay, and he sees that beyond that two club lengths, that there's a bush, and that it's possible for his ball to land within the original two club lengths, roll underneath the bush without his, be required to re-drop it under twenty dash two C. So, he goes in and breaks off some branches of the bush. Well, Rule thirteen dash two does not apply, because there, he's not affecting the area in which he's dropping the ball, i.e. the two club length area, but he is changing the physical features of the hole for the purpose of assisting his play. So, he would be in breach of Rule one dash two for doing that, but not in breach of thirteen dash two, because that area is not covered by thirteen dash two.
If there were a lot of leaves on the ground, can, can you take your foot? I mean, what, what people, you, people would do is where they're going to drop, pick and rake their foot across, as opposed to picking things up individually, and what you end up doing is smoothing it, because you've used your foot, and you're, you've created a...
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, you gotcha, I understand what you're saying.
This happens to you a lot.
It happened at the US, it happened at the US Open at Pinehurst, I think, one of the guys was getting relieved, and he was going to drop it on the pine needles, and he was asking O'Toole, or Mike Davis, or somebody, what he could do, and it was real interesting, and he said, well, you could, you could move all those pine needles out of the way, but be careful not to move the sand that's underneath it, which is exactly what you're saying, right? I mean, you're, he was essentially moved, was moving the, he can remove all those loose impediments, but he was actually disturbing the...
Yeah, yeah, so, let's use the Pinehurst example, where a player hits his ball off into the trees, he's on top of two inches of pine needles, and underneath that is sand, all, all through the green. So, first, he can remove the pine needles, and the rules don't specify a method to remove the pine needles. So, can he kick them away with his foot? That by itself is okay, but where he needs to be careful is with removing the sand, that in other words, it's one thing if, while removing it, he incidentally removes some sand, that's okay. And also, and this is a good example of how we should keep in mind the definition of improve, to think, well, okay, even if he kicks it away, removes some sand, did he really remove enough sand to constitute an improvement of the area in which he's to drop the ball? It, it could vary, in some cases, yes, in some cases, no, but I think that's going to be a lot, lot of it, that if he is kind of, this rule doesn't just let him be sloppy, if you will, and with how he is doing so, he removes a lot of sand, and that results in a, removal of the sand results in improvement, then he would be in breach. But the removal of some sand is not of itself a breach, there has to be enough, or at least in nature, it has to be enough to really improve the area.
John, what about the example where a player is going to be dropping through the green, and maybe there's a small branch on the ground, and he takes his club and rakes it back and forth over that area to get rid of that, that branch? You know, has he improved, because he may have flattened out any irregularities of the surface there?
Uh, you know, I think, Andy, it, not to pass the buck, but I think it just depends on the circumstances. In some cases, that would be a breach, I would think, in many cases, it wouldn't be a breach of doing that. But one way to look at it is, the player's definitely entitled to remove the branch. So, the question is, could he have removed the branch without removing that much sand? If the answer is yes, he could have removed it without removing that much sand, then the next question is, okay, did the removal of that additional sand result, constitute an improvement? Let's go from there. All right, and we'll go through some decisions under thirteen dash two, but let's go through the rest of the rule first. Thirteen dash three, building a stance. Player's entitled to place his feet firmly in taking the stance, but he must not build a stance. Most common example, or what obviously many people think of, although maybe not so much the younger crowd, but Decision thirteen dash three slash two, making stroke while kneeling on towel, that this occurred with Craig Stabler in nineteen eighty-seven in San Diego, just months after, actually, this decision had been published, and he was penalized. And this, we talked, I think, last time, how Decision four dash four C slash one is a candidate for the least popular decision in the book, and this is certainly a candidate as well. But actually, but this is, but each decision addresses the, or illustrates the point that often in rulesmaking, you have to draw the line somewhere, and knowing where, and determining where you can draw a clear and defensible line can be very difficult to do. And with this case, for example, this one act seems pretty harmless, and that there no benefit was gained, all he was trying to do is keep his trousers clean, what, what's the harm? But then, where it gets tricky is when you start walking this down the road. So, let's say, for example, if, if Stabler took one towel, and he folded over several times, and that elevated his knee, knees now an inch off the ground. Well, I don't know, that seems a little less comforting, that starts to bother you. So, okay, what if he did that with several towels? And what if he did it in such a way that now his knees were six inches off the ground? Oh, okay, that can't be right. So, at what point do you draw the line? In this case, really, the only place you could draw a line is looking at it as an all-or-nothing proposition, if it's okay to kneel on a towel, and, or, and any towel, regardless of thread count, regardless of thickness, how many times it's folded over, or it's not okay. And obviously, our inane history took the lateral position, that it's not okay for those reasons. All right, Rule thirteen dash four, another big part of this rule, dealing specifically with what a player's prohibited from doing before playing a ball from a hazard, so that's a bunker or water hazard. So, this rule applies to a ball that lies in a hazard, as well as to a ball that's been lifted from a hazard and may be dropped or placed back in a hazard. So, for example, if Phil and I are playing together, we get our balls into the same bunker, Bill's ball's farther from the hole, and he asks me to lift my ball because it interferes with his ball, with his play, that while my ball is lifted, it's in my hand, that I'm still, that these prohibitions still apply to me. And let's see what those three prohibitions are. First, the player must not test the condition of that hazard, or the condition of a similar hazard. So, for example, if I'm in the left-hand bunker on a hole, I can't go over to the right-hand bunker and start taking practice swings there. We have a, a good decision, we had it a few years ago, thirteen dash four slash zero point five, on page one ninety-one, that first establishes kind of the general guidance as to what is meant by, meant by testing the conditions, and that is, in the first sentence of the answer, actions by which the player could gain more information about the hazard than could be gained from taking a stance. Because we know that Rule thirteen dash three allows us to dig in with our feet when playing a ball from sand, so that's kind of the key, that you're obviously, you can gain a lot of information just by doing that, but it's when you do something that could let you gain information above and beyond that, that that would constitute... and beyond that, that that would constitute testing the condition of the hazard. So with that, that the decision goes on to list a number of acts that are and are not permitted. But the first group, digging in with the feet for a stance is permitted, and it's worthwhile noting that a player may dig in anywhere in the hazard. Doesn't have to be just where he's gonna play from. It's okay to place an object, such as a rake, in the hazard. And then in the second part of the decision goes on to list actions that would constitute testing the condition of the hazard and therefore would be a breach of rule thirteen dash four. If a player takes a stance and then fills in those footprints, that's exceeding that. If you actually stick an object into the, so if you actually take a rake and jab it in, that's testing the condition because that can tell you how much sand there is and so forth. All right, now thirteen dash four B, the player is not allowed to touch the ground in the hazard or water in the water hazard. But the limitation is to specifically for his hand or a club. So with that in mind, looking at this, what's the ruling if a player's playing a ball from a bunker and there is casual water in the bunker and he brushes the casual water with his backswing? Is there any penalty? The answer is no, there's no penalty because he's only prohibited from touching water in a water hazard with his hand or a club. Third, the player is not allowed to touch or move a loose impediment lying in or touching that hazard. And then remember, that applies when his ball is in the same hazard. So what is the ruling? If, let's say, the player's ball is in bunker A, but he wants to remove a loose impediment from bunker B that's nearby, may he do that? The answer is yes, he may. Likewise, what if he's just outside bunker A, but there's a pine cone in bunker A that interferes with the backswing? May he move that? The answer is yes, because his ball's not in bunker A. All right, now, there are three pretty big exceptions, especially the second exception to this. Exception one, provided nothing is done that constitutes testing the condition of the hazard or improves the lie of the ball. There's no penalty if the player touches the ground or touches loose impediments in the hazard or touches water in a water hazard as a result of or to prevent falling. So ordinarily, you're allowed to touch the ground in the hazard with your hands, but if I walk into a bunker and I trip and fall, my hands hit the sand, there's no penalty as long as that doesn't improve the lie of the ball. If I touch the sand, say while removing an obstruction, if there's a rake in the bunker and if while removing the rake, I touch the sand, no penalty. In measuring, perhaps to see, could be to see whose turn it's to play or because two balls are close to each other and one player's going to mark his ball, putter head length to the side, something like that, it's okay to touch the ground or water or loose impediments. Likewise, and similarly, the player is allowed to place his clubs in the hazard. You know, often you'll see a player going up to a green with his sand wedge and a putter. It's okay for him to take the rake and the putter into the bunker, place them on the sand before he plays. All right, now, exception two, which is a big one and saw some significant changes in two thousand twelve. At any time, so that includes before the player's first stroke from the bunker, the player may smooth sand or soil in the hazard, provided this is for the sole, sole purpose of caring for the course and nothing is done to breach rule thirteen dash two with respect to his next stroke. All right, so what does that mean? Let's say, and we'll use the example of a bunker since that's usually the only type of hazard where you really smooth sand or soil, which you do, often do by, with a rake. So let's say I am in a bunker and I walk into the bunker and, that's even say, maybe we'll start with a more harmless example. I'm in a, my ball's in a very large bunker and there's a rake inside the bunker on the opposite side. I go retrieve that rake on the way to my ball. When I retrieve the rake, I stir up the sand and I quickly just smooth the area that I had just disturbed. Any penalty there? Well, the answer will depend as to the details of where that, of where that was and whether there could be any sort of breach of rule thirteen dash two, because I certainly did it for the purpose of caring for the course. And they say, okay, from the rule thirteen dash two perspective, was it on my line of play area, in fact, the area of intended stance or swing? And let's say it wasn't on any of those, it's just to the side, then no penalty at all. Then let's say if it does get more complicated and it is on my line of play, then we have to go back to meaning of approve, say, okay, I smoothed this area on my line of play, did I gain a potential advantage? And that could depend on the circumstance. If it is, if it's a greenside bunker, then where you're not trying to hit the ball far, you can make the case that it improved my line of play in some cases, but if it's a flat fairway bunker, in most cases, it would not be an improvement. So it depends on the details of each case. The exception two goes on to say, if a ball played from a hazard is outside the hazard after the stroke, the player may smooth sand or soil in the hazard without restriction. Now, underline without restriction, because that is a powerful phrase and it means exactly what it says. So let's go over a couple of examples of that application. I hit my ball from a fairway bunker and it goes out of bounds. So we know I have to return to the fairway bunker and drop where I just played from. But we also know that rule thirteen dash two says that I'm not allowed to improve the area in which I'm to drop a ball. So the question is, am I allowed to rake the area in the bunker before I drop the ball there? The answer to that is yes. That ordinarily, well, ordinarily thirteen dash two would say, no, you can't do that. This overrides rule thirteen dash two. When it says without restriction, that means it overrides any other conflict in the rules. So I may rake that in the bunker before I drop the ball there. Now let's look at another situation that's more far-fetched. This actually happened with Thomas Bjorn at the two thousand three British Open, the final round, you might remember. He came to the sixteenth tee with either two or three-stroke lead, par three, he shot into a bunker. And then he took several shots to get out of the bunker and with a question that came up, although it really wasn't an issue at the time, let's say a player hits a bunker shot, the ball is outside the bunker, but while the ball is rolling back to the bunker and it's clear the ball's gonna go back into the bunker, even to the area he just played from, but while that ball is rolling on grass outside the bunker, may he quickly rake the bunker? The answer is yes. While that raking occurs while that ball's outside the bunker, he's allowed to do that, even though ordinarily, we would think that would be a breach of rule one dash two or rule thirteen dash two. So that's another example of without restriction, how that's okay. So to go back to the, probably the more common application of this exception, let's take a case where, that's one player threw a few bunker shots. Let's say a player's ball is at the back of a bunker. He walks into the bunker. On his way to the ball, he rakes the footprints behind him. Is he in breach of the rules? So what questions do we need to ask? One, why did he do that? Did he do it solely to care for the course? If the answer is yes, then we go on. Then we say, okay, did he breach rule thirteen dash two? So in order to decide if he breached rule thirteen dash two, we have to look at, okay, what area did he rake? Was it on his line of play, the area of intended swing and so forth? The answer is nope, wasn't on any of those. And if that's, if those are the answers, then there's no breach so far. So now, let's say the player hits the bunker shot and he leaves it in the bunker, but he, and the ball's now five yards in front of him. May he rake the area he just played from? Again, we have to ask the same questions. One, why is he doing this? Is what if, for example, as we'll see this summer with the, especially say, the road hole bunker, the seventeenth at St. Andrews during the British Open, what if he raked that area because he's concerned that his next shot's going to hit the face and come back in that area? If that's the reason he raked it, is there a breach? Yes, there would be. But let's say if it's a nice, flat bunker and if you rake the area just so he wouldn't have to rake it later, so far, so good. Then you say, okay, is he in breach of rule thirteen dash two? The answer is no, because it's not on his line of play or in the other areas, so he's okay with that. So that is, okay, so the, now, with this additional raking that is now allowed under exception two, that's intended to help both the care of the course and the pace of play, that more footprints will be raked and that it won't delay play to rake them. All right, on to exception three, which has a more limited application. If the player makes a stroke from a hazard, the ball comes to rest in another hazard, underline another hazard. Rule thirteen dash four A does not apply to any subsequent actions taken in the hazard from which the stroke was made. This is another rule that, where sometimes you read it and you struggle to think of what that really means. And how this came to be and a good application is many years ago at the Doral Tournament, VJ Singh was in a fairway bunker about seventy-five yards short of the tenth grain, and from there, he hit his shot into a greenside bunker. And after he did so, he took several practice swings in the fairway bunker, touching the sand each time. So the question was, was that a breach of the rule? You know, and that was before exception three was added. So strictly speaking, wasn't he testing the condition of a similar hazard? And the answer, strictly speaking, was yes, he was, but was that a desirable answer? Was that, is that a good outcome? Or is that something we want the player to be able to do, in part because once he's played from the hazard, can he really gain additional information from that? So to make it so that there would not be a breach in that case, this was added. So this means that after you play from one bunker into another bunker, you can go ahead and take as many practice swings in the first bunker as you want without breaching this rule. Then the note really just confirms what the rule allows by omission, is any time, even at a dress or in the backswing, it's okay to touch an obstruction, something declared by the committee to be an integral part of the course or any grass, bush, tree, or other growing thing. And that's important to notice, that if you're, say, on a bridge over a water hazard, you're allowed to touch the bridge, you're allowed to touch a bush or a tree inside a water hazard, you're allowed to touch the top part of the grass, not necessarily the ground itself, because what are you not allowed to touch? You're not allowed to touch loose impediments, not allowed to touch the ground itself, and this note serves as a good reminder to point out that there is a distinction between the ground itself and things that grow out of the ground, such as tall grass, bushes, trees and so forth, and you're not allowed to touch water in the water hazard. So really, by default, if a player's ball is on a bridge over a water hazard, nothing under thirteen four B or C would prohibit him from touching the bridge. So that is okay. So, and the note just makes that point more clear for us. Penalty for breach of this rule for any section of it, four sections, is the general penalty of loss of hole or two strokes in stroke play. So now let's go through the decisions, and there are more decisions under this rule than under any other rule. And a number of these decisions we've already touched on, such as thirteen dash slash zero point five and slash one. Thirteen dash two slash eight, and this is, and there are a few decisions that echo a similar theme here, and it's a good one to know because once you know this theme or this principle, it can be applied to other situations. The player's lie or line of play through the green is affected by a pitch mark made by his partner's, opponent's, or fellow competitor's ball. Is the player entitled to relief? So ordinarily, you're not allowed to improve your line of play by repairing a pitch mark. So should it matter if someone else he's playing with made the pitch mark? And the answer actually depends as to when the pitch mark was made. If the pitch mark was there before the player's ball came to rest, he's not entitled to relief, so he may not repair the pitch mark. But if the pitch mark was created after the player's ball came to rest there, in equity, he may repair the pitch mark. And this is the important part. A player is entitled to the lie which his stroke gave him. You see, there are other decisions, such as the next couple, that touch on that, that if a player's ball comes to rest and then something else happens that specifically that another player caused, then often the player's entitled to some remedy from that because he's entitled to essentially what his stroke gave him. So it's a useful principle to note. Let's see, we touched on thirteen dash two slash nine. Thirteen dash two slash fourteen point five, branch broken on backswing and swing discontinued. Said in such a case, if you stop your swing and don't make the stroke, there is a penalty, but if you keep swinging and make the stroke, then there is no breach of the rules, or just keep, keep swinging. All right, let's look at decision thirteen dash two slash twenty-five, because this is actually another candidate for one of the least popular decisions in the book, and try to make some sense of it. The player removes the post to find out of bounds on his line of play. Before he plays, he realizes the mistake and replaces the boundary stake. What's the ruling? Well, the decision says the player was in breach of rule thirteen dash two the moment he moved the post and there was nothing he could do to avoid the penalty. The replacement of the post before the next stroke was irrelevant. That answer seems pretty harsh, but it's certainly correct and it makes a fair amount of sense in that rule thirteen dash two, you know, what triggers the penalty in rule thirteen dash two? As soon as the player takes the act, that results in the improvement, regardless of what happens after that. As soon as he does that, that's a breach. Notice with rule thirteen dash two that there's no opportunity to correct the mistake. There are some rules we've seen, such as eleven dash four B, where in stroke play, if a player does something wrong, there's a penalty and he must correct that mistake before being, or else be disqualified. There are some cases where a player makes a mistake, but if he corrects that before he actually plays, for example, if he drops in a wrong place, something like that, then he can avoid penalty. But there's nothing in rule thirteen dash two or any other rule that allows for any correction before play. So in this case, as soon as he removed that stake, he had improved his line of play by taking a prohibited action, by removing something fixed. So he was in breach of this rule and there's no way he could avoid the penalty. All right, let's see, and we discussed thirteen dash four slash zero point five, meaning of testing the condition, a useful decision. Thirteen dash four slash fours is kind of an interesting one. Player takes a practice swing in a water hazard without grounding his club. This club touches some long grass. Is there a penalty? So in a water hazard, what is he not allowed to touch with the club? Loose impediments, water, and the ground itself. So tall grass is not the ground itself. So is there a penalty? No, see note to rule thirteen dash four. However, the player must ensure that his actions do not constitute a breach of rule thirteen dash two. For example, that his practice swings don't remove or flatten somewhat enough of the grass that that actually improves the area of his intended swing, or that his action constitutes testing the condition of the hazard. That if you have, for example, you will see at next year's US Open at Oakmont, where there are a number of ditches throughout the course that have long grass in them, that if a player's ball is in one of them, in their, their water hazards, if he goes down and takes a number of aggressive practice swings through that tall grass, that could be considered testing the condition of the hazard, gain information that would help him with his actual stroke from the hazard. So in general, touch... So in general, touching tall grass is okay, but it's not just making it mandatory to do so.
John, I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how this fits. I remember at Hilton Head, with that situation where he touched it, like on his backswing?
Oh, yeah, oh, in the playoff there.
In the playoff, oh, how does that fit in with?
Okay, yeah, well, what was, that was Australian, was it Brown Davis? Yeah, he was in a Sunday playoff on the eighth hole. He'd hit a second shot to left inside lateral water hazard, and there was, I think it was grass.
It was a loose impediment.
Yeah, but I think what happened is during his backswing, he touched some grass, and nobody on TV noticed it, but he noticed it, and he called the official over, and they looked at it. And first question after determining the grass is what was its status? Was it growing, or was it a loose impediment? And I think in that case, it was a loose impediment, like it had been cut or removed, so it was, it was a loose impediment, which meant that he could not touch it during his backswing. Now, if that grass had still been attached, had been rooted, and he touched it with his backswing, then that would have been okay. So there, he was penalized because it was detached, it was a loose impediment. So that was just a thirteen dash four C situation. Yeah, that's a good question. I'd forgotten that example. The other ones, thirteen dash four slash ten, since most of us officiate, is a good one to know. At first, the question as to whether officials' footprints may be raked in a bunker. The answer is that they may be, but first point is for officials in general, do whatever you can to avoid going into the bunker with the player in such a situation. So it says that, however, even if the area disturbed by the referee is an area covered by Rule thirteen dash two, for example, his line of play or area intended swing, the player would be entitled to restore this area of the bunker to its original condition by raking or other means. The bunker may be restored by anyone. And part of the thinking is that here's the referee who made these footprints, supposedly to help the, to help the player with the ruling after the player's ball had come to rest there. So it's a little bit of the extension that, well, a player's entitled to what his stroke gave him, and when his ball came to rest in that bunker, the referee's footprints weren't there. So that it is a little bit of a player-friendly decision there.
John, we've run across the same situation in college tournaments, where the coach...
Oh. Okay, well, that's...
Because they have that unique status of...
Oh, no. Okay, all right, that's a good question, John. Question in high school or college golf, what if the coach enters the bunker to help the player set his shot? May the coach's footprints be raked? And the answer to that would be no, that he may not. That the referee's footprints may be raked, just because the referee is kind of a special status, but especially if the coach enters the bunker with the player's knowledge, then he just has to accept what it will be, whatever comes.
Even if it doesn't impact his line of play, or...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, if it doesn't have anything to do with his, in the area covered by Rule thirteen dash two, or one dash two situation, he's doing it solely for care of the course, then that's okay.
Well, I mean, typically that happens when the, like, ball is dead and they're trying to find the space in the bunker. But then if you're going to recreate the lie, how far do you go in moving what, what prints looks to be?
All right, well, at first, I think that's a good question. When you're looking for a ball that's buried, believed to be buried in sand in the face of a bunker, you find it, we saw in Rule twelve dash one, that you have to recreate, replace the ball, recreate the lie. So the first point is recreating the lie is just the lie itself, it's not the entire bunker, it's just the lie itself you recreate. And then there's the question of, okay, what's the story with the other footprint in the bunker? And then you actually have to ask yourself, you have to go through almost a whole list of questions to determine which, if any, footprints may be raked. First to say, okay, why, why does the player want to rake the footprints? And if the answer is, well, to care for the course, that's why, and that's, the answer is, well, because he's concerned that his ball might come to rest in one of the footprints, then he's really stuck with it, because in such, in that case, if he allowed everybody to come in the bunker and they were there with his knowledge, and therefore tacit authority, then he's stuck with it. But now, let's say, that's not the concern, he's not concerned the ball's going to come after he plays, going to hit the face and come back into one of the footprints, he just wants to, he's a bit of a neat freak, he wants to tidy up the bunker. So, okay, so, and that's okay, so he's allowed to rake footprints, so then we have to look at, okay, where are the footprints? If the footprints are not in an area protected by Rule thirteen dash two, then we know he's allowed to rake that. Now, if the footprints are in an area protected by Rule thirteen dash two, then we have to say, okay, would that raking constitute an improvement of that area? If the answer's no, it wouldn't be an improvement, then he may rake. If the answer's yes, it would be an improvement, then you say, okay, then you can say, go back and say, okay, who created the footprints, where they created, with his knowledge and so forth? If the answer's yes, then he's stuck with it. So it's a lot to go through. All right. All right, following up on the raking theme, this is, let's just go through another example. Thirteen dash four slash nineteen. Balls of A and B lie in the same bunker, with A, B's ball farther from the hole. B plays, his ball comes to rest nearer the hole than A's ball. Is A entitled to have the bunker restored to its original condition? Yes. In addition to Exception Two to Rule thirteen dash four, which allows the player to smooth sand or soil in the hazard at any time for the sole purpose of caring for the course, A would be entitled in equity to restore the bunker to its original condition by raking or other means, even if this involves an area covered by Rule thirteen dash two. The bunker may be restored by anyone. So what this is saying, in effect, it's a little bit, the similar principle of the player's entitled to what his stroke gave him, that after, in this case, player A's ball came to rest in the bunker, the bunker became disturbed by player B's actions, he's allowed to have the, that area smoothed, so to restore it to the way it was when A's ball first came to rest in the bunker. So that's just an extension of that principle. It also shows how, how in many cases, the leeway under Rule, under Exception Two to Rule thirteen dash four will allow, on its own, sufficient raking anyway, but in some cases, it might not cover everything.
What else is said in thirteen dash four slash fifteen? This is a, is a rule that you're going to be taking. Yeah, you definitely need to be aware of that decision, because that seems like the last couple of years has been on the open book portion every time.
All right, so Phil says, decision thirteen dash four slash fifteen, ball in bunker moves when loose, ball in hazard moves when loose impediment removed. Says that that's a good one to know, because that's been on the exam for a few years. And I suppose what I'd say with that is that, one, if it's on the exam, it's something good to know, but also, just to clarify, it's not as if each year the PGA/USGA exam is the same. So if you've seen it a few times on exams, I'll probably be rotated off, but...
Good.
And hopefully, Phil, you know the answer by now.
I know where to look, but that's the thing.
And let's see, with other decisions, thirteen dash four slash thirty-one, talks about touching the sand in the bunker during the backswing, which is different, and how that is a penalty for touching ground in the hazard. That's different than decision thirteen dash two slash nine, which occurred through the... Useful decision thirteen dash four slash thirty-four, touching bare earth wall of bunker on backswing. Is that a penalty? And it is, because the player touched the ground in the hazard before his stroke, but in this really goes back to the definition of bunker, clarifying that bare earth wall bunker, it's not grass-covered, is part of the bunker. Touching that bare earth wall is the same as touching the sand with your backswing, and it'd be a breach. See, thirteen dash four slash thirty-seven, we talked about earlier about how in Exception Two to Rule thirteen dash four, the allowance to rake without restriction the sand after the ball's been played out of the hazard is absolute, and this gives an example of that. So those are, those are some of the highlights. A lot in, in Rule thirteen, and a lot in the many decisions under Rule thirteen. Any questions on it? Yeah, Kerry.
John, as an official clerk, barely taking the one stance, I think a lot of players, and maybe some officials, would think that if you break a branch or break a sapling, that you're penalized. But take this example, your ball rests about a foot from a sapling, and because I'm not Jim Fury, and I'm afraid I would shame the next shot, and I stand and hit the shot, so I keep backing up into the sapling to take my normal stance, and as the sapling breaks. So, am I, in that situation, because I'm barely taking my stance, but I could possibly hit the ball by standing closer to it, but I might shame it.
All right, Kerry, well, a couple of questions first, and I'd raise that question is because I think in a lot of people's minds, when applying thirteen dash two and determining whether players fairly taking a stance, people instinctively want to look at the breaking of a tree branch differently than just the moving, because the breaking just seems more severe, seems more egregious somehow. But really, the two were trees exactly the same. The moving the branch out of the way and having the tree the same under the rule. If, can be a big if, but if that break occurred while you were fairly taking your stance, there's no penalty. So it still comes back to that question, were you fairly taking your stance? And then, the other question as to what constitutes fairly taking your stance, again, you have to say, okay, I'm going to hit the ball in this way, I'm going to hit it right-handed, eight iron, aiming at the right edge of the green. Okay, to hit the ball there, then say your feet, your body have to be in such a position, how can you get yourself in that position? Right, with, by disturbing the sapling at least, and you kind of go from there.
One of the things that Jeff and I had discussed earlier this winter was the situation where in all of our events, we declare stones in bunkers to be movable obstructions, and obviously, as a committee, your intention is, and I think you adopted it, Aaron Hills as well, is to allow a player to pick up large stones to get out of his way. And the question came up, you know, by what means can you remove an obstruction out of a bunker, and the things that are forgiven? And one of them is taking your club under Rule thirteen dash four, there's no penalty if your club hand touches ground in a hazard, and therefore you could use essentially a club to flick a stone out of a bunker. That's kind of how you see it?
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, there's, as you said, one, there's not a restriction on how to remove movable obstruction, and secondly, Exception One to Rule thirteen dash four allows you to touch the ground in the bunker while removing the obstruction, but it does relate also as to, it could open the door to mainly a breach of thirteen dash two, let's say if that stone's near your ball, and when you remove it, you just take much more sand than is necessary, and by removing that sand, that improves something, then that'd be a breach of thirteen dash two.
That's almost a situation where you, as an official, be right on top of it, because a player, if another player questioned it, you'd never be able to verify what the situation was like before it happened.
Yeah, you're right, as an official, that type of thing, that's really hard to recreating.
Are there any other ramifications of adopting that local rule?
With one concern, and I remember when that local rule was first authorized in this country in two thousand, we used it in two thousand US Mid-Amateur in the mountains of Virginia, where it was, and the question came up, and I remember consulting, RNE have used that for years and years as to how they proceed, is what if the player saw something, and he wasn't sure if it was...
The second bullet, or the first bullet, kind of the example, actually, you have to take care of taking stance.
Okay.
It's because of the branch, the branch can move out of the way, or the sapling can stand or break, which break only means the sapling...
Oh, I think, I don't think they're trying to make, they're trying to say anything. I think it, maybe it was sloppy writing, and frankly, now it's just I myself to blame card card for that one. But, anyway, sorry, for those who were cut off, we apologize, for the question didn't mean for it to be a cliffhanger ending. For the question of when a committee adopts a local rule treating stones in bunkers as movable obstructions, and a player is unsure whether something in a bunker is a stone or just a clump of sand, and he goes to remove it, and turns out to be just a clump of sand, the pulling is. The answer is that if it turns out to be just a clump of sand, then the player is going to be penalized for touching the ground in the hazard, that he needs to, the bottom line is, he needs to be careful with that. So any other questions there with Rule thirteen, any parts of part of it? All right, well, if not, like I said, there's an awful lot there, and just take, take your time going through the decisions. I know a lot of people like to spend one, devote one day to each rule, but when preparing and studying, Rule thirteen's probably worth a few days for that. All right, now, Rule fourteen, oh, and also, just so you know, whatever we're talking about, Rule, that, as you all know, this year, for the first time, we're going to have two, the WSGA is going to have two two-day rule seminars in the latter part of April, and on the second day, we'll have a hundred-question exam, which, which I've written, and it'll be more, it'll be relatively straightforward. For example, there'll be three choices for each answer, and just wanted to let you know that, as is the case of the PGA/USGA exam, that the exam is weighted towards what you like to feel is, are the more important parts, that, for example, there won't be twelve questions on Rule thirty-two and so forth. So that, in fact, before starting the exam, start out and say, okay, we want three questions on Rule one, two questions on Rule two, six questions on Rule thirteen, five questions on Rule twenty, or whatever the numbers are. So the exam, you know, hopefully all will agree, that take it is weighted towards what you think's especially relevant when officiating. All right.
The minister's going to qualify you, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, but, yeah, there's now, starting this year, to officiate WSGA events, in the previous four years, you've scored seventy-five or above on either the WSGA exam, which is new this year, or the PGA/USGA exam. So again, just, just to introduce, as the USGA did many years ago, introduce some standards for officiating. All right, Rule fourteen, striking the ball. Fourteen dash one, we've already talked about the definition of stroke, and this goes on to provide more details as to what type of stroke is allowed. The ball must be fairly struck at with the head of the club, and must not be pushed, scraped, or spooned. So several points there. So if a player saw, I think Andy Bean did this at the Canadian Open many years ago, he missed a short putt, reached over and tapped in with the grip end of his putter. In stroke play, what is the ruling in such a case?
Two strokes.
A two-stroke penalty, and remember, it also counts the stroke. The stroke he made with the grip end of the putter counts as a stroke, it's just that it's an extra stroke, so he'd add two penalty strokes. So let's say if he was line three when he did this, his score for the hole would be six, one more stroke plus two penalty strokes. Decision fourteen dash one slash four, striking ball with half-inch backswing, provides some guidance as to what is meant by fairly striking at the ball, as opposed to pushing, scraping, or spooning. And at the very end there, the top of page two eleven, where it says, if a ball is fairly struck at, there's only momentary contact... struck at, there's only momentary contact, momentary contact between the club head and the ball, or whatever intervenes between the club head and the ball. So that, I, I, I think that's useful in determining whether a player has struck at, satisfied the requirements of this rule. Fourteen dash one slash... Thank you. All right, fourteen dash two, assistance, two, broken into two parts. Fourteen dash two A, physical assistance and protection from the elements. So while making a stroke, a player must not accept physical assistance or protection from the elements. So physical assistance could mean, for example, somebody holding him to make sure he doesn't fall off a cliff. That would be a breach of this rule. Or protection from the elements, common example is a caddy holding the umbrella over the player's head. It's okay for the caddy to do that before the stroke, but not during the stroke. Fourteen dash two B, the positioning of the caddy or partner behind ball. A player must not make a stroke with his caddy, his partner, or his partner's caddy positioned on or close to an extension of line of play or line of putt behind the ball. So first point, this applies anywhere during the round, not just on the putting, applies to any shot. But there is a, it's an exception, that there is no penalty if that person is inadvertently located on or close to an extension behind the ball. And the reason, and that is important, inadvertently means that person is simply not aware where he is in relation to the ball and extension of line of play or line of putt behind it. So if I'm caddying for Bill, and Bill's putting, and I just have the flagstick over my shoulder, and I happen to be standing behind him, but I'm, say, watching the players, players tee off on the next hole, and it's a par three, then there's no breach. But if I'm back there saying, even if it's not for the purpose of helping him with that stroke, if I'm back there to watch his putting stroke to help for future reference, or if it's because we're playing into the sun, and I'm standing back behind him on his tee shot to help follow the ball into the sun, that would still be a breach. It's only if I'm inadvertently there, that I don't realize quite where I am, that there's no penalty. Rule fourteen dash three. This rule, it's helpful to appreciate that there are three elements of this rule. That of using artificial devices, such as a, let's say, a rangefinder, when the local rule allowing rangefinders is not in effect, unusual equipment, and the unusual use of equipment. We'll go through some examples of all of that. So after the preamble, in terms of being encouraged to consult the USGA before using or manufacturing something, the rule starts, during a stipulated round, so that's the first point, is that it's certainly okay to use your training aids on the practice tee before you tee off, but not during the round. A player must not use an artificial device or unusual equipment, or use equipment in an unusual manner in these three circumstances. A, that might assist him in making a stroke or in his play, or B, for the purpose of gauging or measuring distance or conditions that might affect his play, or C, that might assist him in gripping the club, except it's okay to wear plain gloves, it's okay to use resin powder and drying or moisturizing agents, it's also okay to wrap a towel or handkerchief around the grip. So the exceptions to that are, if a player's not in breach of this rule, if the equipment is designed for or has the effect of alleviating a medical condition, the player has a legitimate medical need for the device, and the committee is satisfied that its use does not give the player an undue advantage over other players. And this gives, lets the decision rest with the committee, with the thinking that the committee is going to know better than, say, even the USGA, of what this player's medical condition is, what his needs are, and so forth, and how much of, of assistance this actually could be. And exception two, a player's not in breach of this rule if he uses equipment in a traditionally accepted manner. And the best example of that is using the putter as a plumb line. That using a putter as a plumb line is using the putter in a way that's unusual. That's not what a putter is designed to be, how a putter is designed to be used. So you would think, wait a minute, is using a putter as a plumb line unusual use of equipment, therefore, a breach of this rule? Well, ordinarily, it would be, but exception two allows that because that has gone on so long in the game that's traditionally accepted, therefore permissible for the player to do. And we'll go, go through some examples of other decisions after we get through the rest of rule fourteen. And the penalty for breach of rule fourteen dash three is disqualification. So it's, so if a player, there was an example a few years ago, at an LPGA event, where Julie Inster was playing, and I think when she, her group was making the turn, there was a delay on their tenth hole for fifteen minutes or so, and to loosen up when it seemed time to play again, she pulled a donut out of her bag, put it on the club head, and made some swings with it. That is considered to be an artificial device, and she was in breach of this rule for doing that, and she was disqualified, unfortunately. There is, there is a note that is widely used, the committee may make a local rule allowing players to use devices that measure or gauge distance only. So I think we're all... Rule fourteen dash four, striking the ball more than once. Players' club strikes the ball more than once in the course of a stroke, player must count the stroke and add a penalty stroke, making two strokes in all. So first, number of times you strike the ball, doesn't matter whether it's two or three times, it's still going to be a one-stroke penalty. And then, and you do count the original stroke. So let's say, for example, a player, player's tee shot on a par three lies just off the putting green, and he double hits the chip shot, and the ball goes in the hole. What is the ruling in that case? His score for the hole is, he counts the stroke he made, he counts the chip shot, the stroke for that, and he adds one penalty stroke for striking the ball more than once. Rule fourteen dash five, playing the moving ball. The general statement, player must not make a stroke at his ball or at moving. And there are a few exceptions. Ball falling off tee, we saw under rule eleven. Striking the ball more than once, we just saw there. There's, we'll see in the next clause, ball moving in water hazard, you're allowed to play a moving ball in those circumstances. Now, it goes on to say, when the ball begins to move only after the player's begun the stroke, wears backswing, and there's no penalty under this rule, underlying under this rule for playing a moving ball, but he is not exempt from any penalty under the following rules, under rule eighteen dash two A. So go through an example, my ball lies in the fairway, so it's in play, I address the ball, I ground the club behind it, I start my backswing, during the backswing, the ball starts to move, and then I actually play the ball while the ball is in motion. What is the ruling in that case?
Penalty and the ball's played as a lie.
Yep, exactly. It's Bill's at one-stroke penalty, and the ball is played as a lie, so I will now lie three.
But the penalty is under eighteen, not under fourteen?
Exactly. There's no penalty under rule fourteen dash five because of when the ball started to move. The ball started to move during my swing, so no penalty there. But, as the rule says, it does not get me off the hook under rule eighteen dash two B. The ball did move after I addressed it, and I'm still on the hook for that, so there's one penalty stroke. Then when it gets to rule eighteen, next week, we'll see that while normally you have to replace the ball, it's been moved under rule eighteen, you don't have to do so if the movement occurs after you start your swing. All right, rule fourteen dash six, ball moving in water. And even in the title, go ahead and add, in a water hazard, this does not apply to casual water. It applies only to water in a water hazard. The player is allowed to make a stroke at the moving ball, but he must not delay making the stroke, allow the wind or current to improve the position of the ball. So in other words, if my ball's up there, I can't wait for it to, I can't stay, stand down here and wait for it to come here. A ball moving in water, maybe in water hazard, maybe lifted if the player likes it. Six. So then, what, what is the ruling if you're playing in a competition, and there's just an absolute downfall, it's just a river of water running down the fairway, casual water? Player's ball is in that casual water. Is there anything toward while it's, and while it's flowing towards the boundary? No, he just had, he can't play it, he can't lift it, he just has to see where it winds up. But hopefully, a play won't be going on in circumstances like that. At least not in WSGA events, we know. All right, now, let's take a look at the decisions. Just a reminder, fourteen dash three zero point five, that a local rule is still necessary for players to use distance measuring devices. And let's look at decisions fourteen dash three slash six and slash six point five, because they make an interesting point combined together. First, at fourteen dash three slash six, player putts with a golf ball held in his left hand against the grip. Is such use of a ball permissible? No, player's using equipment in an unusual manner to assist him in making a stroke, and therefore, this is a breach of rule fourteen dash three. So the player would be disqualified. This, the golf ball is a normal piece of equipment, it's not an artificial device, it's not unusual equipment, but he's using it in an unusual manner. That's not the originally intended use for a golf ball. He's using it to assist his play, so that's a breach of rule fourteen dash three. But let's take the same thing and say the player does that only when he's making a practice swing or a practice stroke. Is that okay? And the answer's yes. The decision establishes a point that you really can't get from just the rule itself. The prohibition in rule fourteen dash three, using equipment in an unusual manner applies to the stroke, the strokes that count in the player's score, and not to practice swings or practice strokes. So this is, for example, is what allows a player to practice like this, or while waiting on a tee, to stick a towel under one or both arms to make some practice swings, that's okay. He's allowed to do that, even though he is using equipment in an unusual manner, that prohibition applies against only strokes that count in the score.
John, may I go back to rule fourteen four?
Yeah, yeah, change.
On fourteen five, playing, a certain period, I just recall, a Blackhawk Country Club, fourteenth hole, the par four goes up to the dogleg, fifteenth hole comes back the opposite side. Player was taking a shot, and was in the movement to fairly strike the ball, and as he swung at the ball, the ball came off the fifteenth tee, hit his ball, knocked it off the tee, and he swung and he missed. Obviously, the ball was calling. His intention was to fairly strike the ball, but he didn't cause it to move, it was moved by outside agency. What would be the ruling there?
Well, I think... So the question is, a player is on the tee, he's intending to strike the ball, and during his swing, a ball from another hole comes over, moves that ball, the player doesn't react quickly enough, he continues his stroke, and this is his ball. Does that count as a stroke? Unfortunately, it, it will. It's type of thing that if his reflexes are quick enough and he discontinues the swing, that's one thing, but if he continues swinging, he's still intended to strike that ball, even though an outside agency moved it, and it's just, it's rotten luck.
That's the ruling that I made, and my, the air was wet on my tires.
You could buy under one, one dash four?
Well, I, well, it's, it's a tough break, it's a tough break, but...
It's a misdemeanor. Once you turn ninety, you, you wanna get to heaven, so you use one third.
A rub of the green, I mean, uh...
Yeah, well, it's, it's not a rub of the green, it's, it's just bad luck.
But he wouldn't, but he wouldn't have a penalty under eighteen, because you have the exception of eighteen two B.
Yeah, yeah, so even if this had occurred, say, in the fairway, when the ball was in play...
Yeah.
For the ball moving after a dress, you'd say eighteen dash one overrides eighteen dash two B in that case.
Right, right.
But isn't there also a decision, John, that if he pulls up, in other words, the court...
Or changes the direction of the path.
Absolutely, when he goes, whoa, and he pulls up, that's not a stroke.
You're right, if he makes a conscious decision not to strike the ball, and either stops a swing or alters the path or whatever, then it's, he's not considered to have made a stroke.
The reason I mention that, the reason I mention that is, you see, we've all seen Tiger Woods, you know, stop his, his golf swing, and they always make, oh, only Tiger Woods could do this, you know? And it didn't pass the ball, and, you know, the announcers, the color guy.
And that's what I asked.
Swing over the ball, and it's not a stroke if you intend to...
I asked that player, you know, was it your intent to hit that ball? He says, hell, yes, it was like that. He says, there was no ball there. And I said, sorry, and I got in the cart and smoked out.
I think that's a good, good way to handle it, but, you know, any time when you make a ruling, good or bad, just make the ruling and get out of there. So he's a...
I know that.
That's right, and, and he took that a little too far. He left the course, I don't know if he even stayed in the stage, but...
Gene, your question is kind of answered in rule eleven dash three. You know, it says, however a stroke is made at the ball in these circumstances, whether the ball is moving or not, the stroke counts, but there is no penalty.
Yeah, eleven dash three also reinforces that, right?
I wasn't sharp enough to find eleven dash three at the time.
Nineteen eighty-three, by the way. At Blackhawk, I remember that.
All right, so then, the decisions fourteen dash three slash eleven and slash twelve, again, are a nice pair, just to make the point, that a plumb line would be considered the use of an artificial device, because that's designed for the purpose of gauging, you know, those conditions. So that'd be a breach of this rule, but using the club as a plumb line, while it is unusual use of equipment, the exception two, allow regarding traditionally accepted use, unusual use of equipment, would allow that.
We had at the senior AM in California this past September, a caddy brought a retractable pointer, and he stood up on the green, went like this, and plumbed up his ball.
Really? Wow.
Yeah, and dejected him.
What would you do in a case on, on a par five on the second shot, and a fellow was plumbing him with his driver?
Well, Arnold, I know you would penalize him for slow play.
But...
What's the time?
Yeah, a plumb line, as silly as that sounds, you're plumbing the three-hundred-yard shot with a driver, I think, I don't think you can draw, make a distinction. I think you have to say that's okay.
Jerry Kelly is now the twelve percent.
I'll call six seven.
Drive, free wood, makes no difference.
And then, one decision that fourteen dash three slash seventeen is added in two thousand twelve is worth going over. Now, what's the ruling about listening to music or radio broadcasts, let's say Brewers game, or any, or listening to a news broadcast during a stipulated round? Well, it reminds us by saying that player's not allowed to use an artificial device that might assist him in making a stroke or in his play. And listening to music or a broadcast for a prolonged period, for a prolonged period might assist the player, but for example, by eliminating distractions, you're promoting a good tempo. Therefore, this would be a breach of rule fourteen dash three. However, it would not be a breach of the rule for a player to listen to a device briefly, for example, obtain the results of another sporting event or traffic information while walking between holes. A committee will have to consider all available facts and circumstances in determining whether a player using an artificial device to listen to music has done so for a prolonged period, and therefore, be in breach of this rule. And so forth. So, and obviously, as with all other elements of rule fourteen dash three, this applies only during the stipulated round. So this is a change from previous decisions. It was new in two thousand twelve. And I'm just curious, has anyone here had any rulings with this, or is it fairly well-understood by players?
No, at our member guest, we have that problem. Everybody brings their speakers and... No, at our member guest, we have that problem. Everybody brings their speakers and- and sets them up in their car and plays the music and-
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. And of course, our pro.
Well, I- I remember it's funny, like, a year or two ago, one, late one afternoon at Aaron Hill's, I went out, you know, six or seven o'clock to take some pictures because afternoon light was really good. And I get out there and last groups on fifteen, sixteen in the far corner and I start hearing this music and they were doing the same thing. It just seemed so incongruous for a beautiful summer evening.
Yeah.
To who knows what and obviously, since they were paying guests, you know, I didn't tell them they were disqualified. But it- it wasn't interesting. I- I'd never heard people play music out like that before.
Unfortunately, John, it's- it's- it's happening more and more often. I mean, I was- I was last week, uh, when I was in Florida for a couple of days and at a board meeting and the guy I was playing with had his Bluetooth on and he was listening to music while he was playing. And he was laughing, you know, and then the other guy was saying, oh, that's a good idea. And they said, oh, yeah, everybody's- everybody at club now has all these portable speakers. They're- they're playing the music through their-
Quite popular.
Are they all young?
Oh, no, guys, all different ages. And- and it, you know, and the member guest, I would say probably, probably had five groups that were listening to music. And I mentioned something to the pro and he said, oh, well, you know, it's ours, member guest.
What does that mean about the company?
I- I thought, you know, we need to address our policy. You know, we say you can't use a cellphone. And then someone will walk up with a smartphone and say, you know, can I use the GPS on this? And usually, it's in a very non-consequential event, we say, go ahead, whatever.
No, e- every W S G A event's got it.
Always fun.
That's right. They can use a cellphone for everything but making a phone call.
Which is ironic because the one thing it's intended to be used for, you can't use it, but you can use it for everything else. If you were to talk to Mike Sweeney, who used to work for Southern Cal, they have a no phone policy, then he simply states, you can't use the phone for any purpose. Do you have any comment, one way or another?
Well, and the tricky thing with that is to say, okay, you can't use the phone for any purpose. But what if you do use it for a purpose that the rules allow? I don't think the rules of golf really allow you to disqualify the person using the phone to, uh, get messages at work or whatever.
And then I know for a long time, if you'd call up to ask the U S G A about use of a GPS based phone application, Bernie would take you through some sixteen point stuff.
Well, well, I- you know, what's interesting about that is, I think, I'm not sure if it's on the U S G A website, but I believe it's on the R N A website. They- they have a chart, uh, as to what- what's allowed in terms of whether you're allowed to use a certain device for distance information. Like, yes, no, yes, no, and it's, uh, it takes a while to walk- walk away through it.
It's on the R N A website.
Yeah, I think so.
A number of years ago, at the club championship at Hidden Lake, we had a goofball playing against, to use an Italian word, putts. The goofball was wearing, um-
Headphones?
Headphones so that he wouldn't have to listen to the putts yak. And so the putts said to me, and of course, I wasn't the referee, it was Paul Factor, which also got him mad because he was asking me, how do you determine that he's listening to music? I mean, this is how out of line the whole is. And- and it just proved one thing. One was a goofball, the other was-
And on the way home, you're gonna have to tell me who those guys are.
They're being voting the putts rule.
And then with that, mentioning the, you know, smartphone or what the decision's called multifunctional device, decision fourteen dash three slash eighteen, which was new for last year and, uh, is- is helpful. It is asked the question, during the round, may a player access local weather information through an application or internet? And the answer is yes, uh, because the prohibition is only applicable to the specis- uh, specific act of gauging or measuring. Uh, whereas if I just pull up weather dot com for Hartford, my phone isn't actually measuring what the weather is. The phone, the- it's merely reporting what weather dot com is, uh, measuring. So that, uh, that would be okay. And let's see, uh, the last decision, fourteen dash five, two, making stroke at oscillating ball is a good one to know is on- on windy days when balls, especially on the greens, can oscillate a little bit. Players can be concerned because players know, generally know that you're- they're not allowed to play a moving ball. So they ask the reasonable question, when, if I play this ball that's oscillating, it's not moving, it's not coming to rest somewhere else, but it's just oscillating, am I going to be penalized for playing a moving ball? And this decision allows, uh, us to tell them, uh, no, you would not be penalized for playing a moving ball. So that ball's not considered to be moving. All right, so that's rule fourteen. Any questions on that? All right, if not, let's see, it looks like we have, uh, time to get into rule fifteen and then we'll, uh, call it a day. Rule fifteen, uh, deals with two big topics, a substituted ball and a wrong ball. And sometimes it can, uh, be a little, uh, tricky to know the distinction between the two, but it's a distinction that is important to know because as we'll see, the, uh, uh, the two breaches are treated very differently, uh, under the rules. Now, first, fifteen dash one, uh, establishes principle that a player must hole out with the ball played from the tee ground unless that ball's lost or out of bounds or the player substitutes another ball. As we'll- as we'll see, sometimes substitution is allowed, sometimes it's not allowed. Rule fifteen dash two, uh, deals with, um, substitution. If a- a player may substitute a ball when proceeding under rule that permits the player to play, drop, or place another ball in completing play of the hole. Uh, one rule we've seen, uh, we've seen a couple of rules so far that allow substitution. One is rule five dash three, that if a ball is in fact unfit for play, the player may, uh, swap out balls. Secondly, we saw under rule six dash eight, that with resuming play after a suspension of play, the player may, uh, substitute, uh, balls. In which case, the substituted ball becomes the ball in play. Now, what, we'll see other cases where substitution is allowed, such as a player taking relief from a water hazard or proceeding under the unplayable ball rule is allowed to substitute balls. But if a player substitutes balls when not permitted, that substituted ball is not a wrong ball. That's an important point, and it is ball in play. So if the player plays it, he's playing an improperly substituted ball and there is a penalty for that, but he is not playing a wrong ball. If the mistake is not corrected as provided in rule twenty dash six. So what's an example when a- the mistake could be corrected before any penalty is applied? Let's say a player is taking relief from a cart path. And we'll see that rule twenty four dash two requires the player to drop the same ball when taking relief. But let's say he drops a different ball and then his fellow competitor questions that and points out that he's required to drop the same ball. Well, since he hasn't played it yet, he's allowed to lift that substituted ball and proceed correctly. Now, how would he correct that mistake under twenty dash six? Would he simply swap out balls on the ground or would he drop the original ball? He would drop the original ball. And one way to look at it is you'd go back to where, to what he was doing when he did something wrong and that was when he dropped the substituted ball. So that's an example where he could correct the mistake before playing the- before making the stroke and avoid penalty. But if the player actually makes a stroke at the wrongly substituted ball, he loses the hole in match play or incurs a penalty of two strokes in stroke play under the applicable rule. And stroke play must play out the hole with the substituted ball. So that's an important distinction because we'll see, uh, in stroke play, if you play a wrong ball, it's a two-stroke penalty and you must correct the mistake by playing the correct ball. That is not the case with an improperly substituted ball. You add the two penalty strokes in stroke play and you keep playing that ball. And note that says that that penalty falls under the applicable rule. So really, there is no penalty under rule fifteen dash two. Rule fifteen dash two just points you to the direction of the rule you're in breach of. So let's say in that example, when a player was taking relief from a paved cart path, if he substitutes balls, drops, and plays that substituted ball, what rule is he in breach of?
Twenty dash seven?
Actually, in that case, it would be twenty four, twenty four dash two. Because twenty four dash two is the rule that requires him to lift and drop the ball. By not doing that, he is in breach of rule twenty four dash two. Uh, the exception, uh, for this is if a player incurs a penalty for making a stroke from a wrong place, there is no additional penalty for substituting a ball when not permitted. So, I need to touch on what Arnold was saying. Let's say, play- that player taking relief from the cart path, he does two things wrong. He substitutes balls when not permitted and he drops and plays from a wrong place. Then that ca- either wa- in match play, we know he's gonna lose the hole no matter what. But in stroke play, he'll wind up with a total penalty of just two strokes, uh, because of this exception and not four strokes. That in other words, rules members are saying that the offense of playing from a wrong place really is the most important thing. If a player plays from a wrong place, let's not care about the- let's not worry about improper substitution there.
John, I had, I think I brought this question before, but, uh, I think it's a substituted ball, wrong ball. Uh, state high school qualifying at, but part for the, uh, girls. And Diane and I just had a surprise. As I walk in, there was a bunch of girls crying. And, uh, a golfer walked in, he says, I got this ruling you should, uh, help me out. And, uh, well, apparently on the- on the thirteen hole, which is slightly uphill, uh, player A and B both hit balls up on the green nearby. Couldn't see where they actually were because it's, uh, it's elevated. Walked up, marked ball, E wa- marked her ball and B marked A ball, her ball. They went back and they putted. And we got the next hole, he teed off and Phil, they hit one to the left and Mary, he went to the right. And when they went and looked, he said, whoops, this is not my ball. I had a green mark and this is like that. Well, they exchanged balls. And they assumed what had, that on the green, she went up and marked this ball and she marked that ball and they didn't check the balls, you know, like that. And they went back and they cutted it out and from that spot. And the professional disqualified both of them for not, uh, uh, teeing off the next round and not correcting, uh, hitting the wrong spot. And I came on, I called Bill, I did, and then I called Tom and, uh, and they said, well, here's a case where they substituted a ball and therefore it's not a wrong ball, but there should be a two-stroke penalty applied to each of the players. And so that's the decision. And what happened is the gal that got with the two strokes, two- two strokes added, still shot seventy-four and her team qualified to go to state. But we disqualified her, the- the team didn't go to the state, so they were all crying. So after talking to them, they made the change in that rule and instead of disqualifying, added two strokes.
Well, I, yes, so the question is, two players hit up to the green by mistake. Each player goes over, uh, lifts, uh, cleans, replaces, other players fall in place. So have they played improperly substituted balls from wrong places or have they played a wrong ball? In that case, it would not be considered to be a wrong ball, although, you know, in fairness to professional, I think there's a chance that many years ago, they may well have been considered to have played a wrong ball. But really, what they did, uh, that, for example, if that happens with Bill and me, that my ball is over here, but instead if I go lift and will close Bill's ball over there, I've done, uh, two things wrong. One, I'm not physically playing my ball, substituted, uh, permitted. Instead of playing my ball from over here, I play his ball from over there. I've played improperly substituted and played from a wrong place. And the- and this is an example where the fact that I lifted his ball and replaced it, it makes a huge difference. If I just walked up with Bill's ball, played it, then I would have played a wrong ball. But the fact of lifting it and putting it in play made it a substituted ball, albeit an improperly substituted ball.
John, there's a- there's a wonderful, uh, essay written by Lou Blakely on the U S G A University. Two college players, uh, and it's a scenario that- that really helps you distinguish between the difference between a substituted ball and a wrong ball.
Oh, thank you, Phil. That- that's a great reference. Now, Lou Blakely's website, through the green dot org. Uh, he has a number of excellent essays, including especially valuable one of, I think it's, I think he pulled through several scenarios of players who hit up to a green and do various things like that and what- what the rulings are, and that's great. It's among other things, uh, no one on the planet understands the issue of substitute ball and wrong ball better than Lou Blakely does, so.
Yeah, it's- it's very concise. There's just- there's just one, um, there's just, it's just one incident with two players and two scenarios that very, very much helps you argue in that- that distinction.
The offshoot, uh, story was, is that the- the young gal and her mother both came up and hugged me and gave me a kiss. And as I drove, driving home, Diane wouldn't talk to me.
All right, so on to rule fifteen dash three, which talks about playing a wrong ball. And, uh, divided into, uh, match play and stroke play. First, match play, if a player makes a stroke at a wrong ball, and let's remember our definition of wrong ball. Any ball other than player's ball in play or provisional ball or in stroke play, a second ball. Um, in match play, it's straightforward, he loses the hole. Wrong ball belongs to another player, its owner must place ball in the spot which the wrong ball was first played. Uh, exception, uh, unusual twist, it's, uh, unique to match play. If a player and opponent exchange balls during play of a hole, first to make a stroke at a wrong ball loses the hole. So that makes sense. But wait, and this cannot determine, when you can't tell who first played the wrong ball, the hole must be played out with the balls exchanged, which you can have only in match play and not in, uh, stroke play. The one exception, and it's, uh, unfortunately, there needs to be an exception, although it's a very, very narrow one, is that there's no penalty for playing a wrong ball that's moving in water in a water hazard. And the reason for that is if a ball's moving in water in a water hazard, the player can't lift the ball from orientation. So if he doesn't have the opportunity to identify it, then we can't penalize him for playing a wrong ball. Stroke play, uh, the answers, the ruins a little more involved. Player plays a wrong ball, remember, this is anywhere on the course, including from a hazard. He incurs a penalty of two strokes, but that's not all. They must correct the mistake by playing the correct ball or proceeding under the rules. If he does not correct this mistake before playing from the next tee or of his last hole, for, uh, declaring his intention to correct the mistake before leaving that- that green, he is disqualified. So, uh, and there- so there are a few different ways a player can play a wrong ball and ha- a few different ways he can correct play of a wrong ball. So let's go through some. Normal one, uh, I hit my tee shot into the right left. I look for, uh, three minutes, I find a ball. I think it's mine, I play it. Turns out not to be mine. So I'm penalized two strokes and I play the correct ball. So now, I have two minutes to go back and look for my original ball. If I find it, then I play my original ball. What if I don't find my original ball? Then how do I proceed?
Twenty seven one.
Twenty seven dash one, so I go back to the tee. And then I play from the tee and say, hit that shot into the fairway. In that case, what would I be lying in the fairway? Yeah, five, this, well, again, number of strokes made. I make my original tee shot, make my second tee shot. Penalty strokes, one penalty stroke for lost ball, two penalty strokes for, um, uh, playing a wrong ball. Somewhat similar situation, and remember the definition of wrong ball. I hit my tee shot, goes out of bounds, but I don't see the boundary stakes. And I play my ball, it's lying out of bounds, and then Bill points out to me that it was out of bounds. At that point, how should I pers- how should I proceed? Go back to the tee, so I go back to the tee, play again from the tee, out into the fairway, and what do I lie in the fairway? In that case, I lie five in the fairway, the same thing. So I have the two tee shots that I played, one penalty stroke for going out of bounds, and then two penalty strokes for, uh, playing a wrong ball. And with questions like that, uh, on rules quizzes, uh, don't forget the penalty stroke for going out of bounds or the penalty stroke for lost ball. That sometimes you're so upset, you're so focused on the penalty for a wrong ball, you tend to overlook the other penalty that's incidental, that the player really can't avoid, the penalty for a lost ball or, uh, for going out of bounds.
And John, another, uh, um, trick that they use on the rules exam is the question where-
Look, there are no tricks on the rules.
Strategy that they use to trick you. Strategy that they use to trick you, is, you know, a player marks his ball on the green, and then just moves it to the side, and then puts that ball. And, you know, the answers are typically, does he get penalized for playing from a wrong place, does he get penalized for playing an incorrectly substituted ball, or does he get penalized for playing a wrong ball? And you think, well, it can't be a wrong ball, because that was the ball that he had in play, but indeed, it is a wrong ball, because that ball's not in play as soon as he marked it in position. And, so that's a trick.
So I'm sensing you have an adversarial approach to the rules exam.
I feel a lot.
Alright, and if the player's not correct the mistake in a timely manner, he is disqualified. So this is the third time we've come across in stroke play, where a player must correct a mistake or be disqualified. We saw rule three dash two, favor to hole out, eleven dash four B, playing from outside the tee-in ground, and now fifteen dash three B, play of a wrong ball. And one way to look at it is that this disqualification, you could argue, is really just an extension of three dash two. If you don't correct this mistake, you really haven't hold out on the hole, it's just an extension of that. Strokes made by a competitor with the wrong ball, they'll count it as score, and so forth. And likewise, there's the exception for playing a wrong ball that's moving in water in a water hazard, no penalty there.
I have a teeny-tall, great examples of your past experiences, this one, this one really hurt, the championship, the invitational that the University of Wisconsin ladies have in the fall. They come in, it's quite a term, they come from all over the country, and it was an awful day, like it usually is, raining and blowing, and the number one player for Georgetown hits her ball on the rough, and the second group comes down, and she, she goes and she thinks it's the right ball. Another group, another player in that group is off in the woods trying to find the ball, another, they're a different ball, other group comes, don't, don't see them in the woods, because it's, again, windy, rainy, and awful. And the girl from the next group comes down, hits it on the green from Michigan State, and she goes up and she marks it, and she says, this isn't my ball. And so, we, another girl in the Georgetown group says, oh, that's the balls we're playing, so I raced down, almost tipped the cart over, going to the sixteenth green at University Ridge, and she had just hit her tee shot, and I had to give her the news. She took it very well, the coach didn't take it.
I tell you, one thing that's interesting, that, I had a ruling at the stroke play portion, West Ham Republic links this past summer, where player hits tee shot just a few yards off fairway into really tall grass, and we search, and we search, and we search, at about the four forty-five mark, find a ball, and you find a ball, and there's a logo visible, it's a logo from his college. So, you know, he just, it's gotta be it. So he plays it, gets out to the fairway, is not it. So we go back, look for fifteen seconds, can't find it, so he's gotta go back to the tee, is not, now the original ball in play. But that just emphasizes the importance of identifying ball. You just assume that, you know, what are the odds that another ball, that title's with my school's logo on it would be here, and sure enough.
Same situation happened, this guy at Marquette University, one of their former competitors, at Booma, and a fellow hits a shot on the twelfth hole over the green into the jungle area, goes in there and sees a ball, plays it out, knocked it a great shot, and holds it out, picks it up, and it's Memphis State, and it has a Memphis State logo on the ball. And he looked at it, he said, well, I'm playing a Memphis State one, and this is a Memphis three. So apparently, in the practice round, somebody had hit one there and left it there, couldn't find it, and that, he played it. And he, he came up to me, I was an official with others, and he said, this is not my ball, what do I do? The lost ball, you have to go back to where you struck it from, and then play on it, and like that. And the coach came up to him, and greeted that player, saying something, he said, why did you even mention it, and like that, I mean, and it cost them the championship by one shot, Memphis State had one chance.
Alright, so let's go through a few decisions, because I think we've got a little bit of a time deadline in terms of how much can be recorded. And the decisions under this rule, a few, just a few we'll go over. Decision fifteen slash fourteen, player believing the ball lined very badly in a bunker is his, deems it unplayable, drops it in the bunker, and plays it out. He then discovers that the ball he plays is not his original ball. Has he played a wrong ball? Answer, no. So that's the first point, to me, that he is not, that's not a wrong ball, it's a substituted ball, then, once we make that determination, we have a number of things to go through. So, but let's, a good rule of thumb, is that any time you drop or place another ball, it's not going to be a wrong ball. There are only a couple of times where you drop or place a ball, that it would still, it would be a wrong ball. One of, one of which, the more common of which, is let's say, that when it's the continuation of play of a wrong ball. Let's say, I hit my tee shot into the rough, I find a ball I think is mine, I don't lift it or do anything to it, but I just play it. I play it, I hit it into a bush, and then, from there, I deem the ball unplayable. I lift the ball, I drop it within two publinks where it lay, play it, then, after I play that, I realize it's not my ball. That even though I did drop that ball, that that's considered to be a continuation of the original stroke with the wrong ball. So the key there is, before I did anything with that ball in terms of lifting or dropping it, I had first made a stroke at it, so it's continued, you have play of the original ball. The second exception is more far-fetched, even though that one is not that likely. And that's a very rare case where, in match play, where a player decides to play a second ball mistakenly believing he's allowed to play a second ball under rule three dash three, which obviously, he may not do in match play, that that second ball he plays would be a wrong ball, because there, he's not intending to substitute for the original ball, he's rather intending to play it in addition to the original ball. But otherwise, a good rule of thumb is that whenever a player drops or places a ball, it's not going to be a wrong ball. Okay, so in this case, fifteen slash fourteen, player finds his ball, deems it unplayable, drops under the unplayable ball rule, and plays it. Has he played a wrong ball? No. So, but what has he done? The procedures in twenty-eight DNC, the unplayable ball, may not be applied, except with reference to the position of the player's ball in play, and this must be, must be found and identified. The player was permitted to identify the ball, but he didn't do so, so he could have protected himself. In this case, the ball dropped and played, was not the original ball, it was a substituted ball. Okay, so now you have to say, what rule would have allowed the player to do anything with the ball? Rule twenty-eight wouldn't have allowed him to do it, because he didn't know the location of his ball, to use option B or C. Since the location of the ball was not known, at the time the substituted ball was dropped, what was the only rule he could have proceeded under? Twenty seven dash one. So now, we're going to use rule twenty seven dash one to judge his actions, say, okay, if this was his tee shot, he should have gone back to the tee, he didn't. Instead, he played from up here, so he's played from a wrong place, and now you have to decide whether it's a serious breach of playing from a wrong place. And in many cases, like this, it would be a serious breach, not necessarily all, but in a good number, it would be a serious breach, which as we'll see, requires the player to correct the mistake or be disqualified. So that's a good one, because that decision helps with the distinction between a substituted ball and a wrong ball. Now, decision fifteen dash three B slash two is a decision that was revised a few years ago. A player plays a wrong ball onto the putting green, he discovers the error, and returns to the spot from which the wrong ball was played. He finds another ball, and plays it to the green. He then discovers that he has played another wrong ball. Is the penalty two strokes or four strokes? The answer there is two strokes, really, or, I'm sorry, it says four strokes, because once he realizes he played the wrong ball, in effect, the penalty clock is reset, and he is then obligated to proceed correctly. If he doesn't proceed correctly, then he has an additional two penalty strokes. And that relates to decisions one dash four slash twelve, dash thirteen. Alright, so that is the end of fifteen, any questions on that, that we have remaining?
I have a question from online that actually pertains to rule thirteen, and I think it's actually a pretty good question. And essentially, the question is this, the last sentence of decision thirteen dash two slash zero point five, meaning of improvement, the last sentence of the first paragraph talks about, therefore merely changing an area protected by rule thirteen dash two will not be a breach of rule thirteen dash two unless it creates such potential advantage for the player in his play. Then, if you go to rule, decision thirteen dash two slash twenty-six, I've actually had this ruling happen, or decision, where a player moves grass to determine whether or not it's fixed or loose. And I was wondering if you could explain, in this person's mind, and somewhat mine, the discrepancy.
Okay, well, let's, well, first, let's look at that decision, thirteen dash two slash twenty-six. A player can determine whether a long blade of grass, a twig, tumbleweed, or something else interfering with his swing through the green is loose or attached. The player moves the object to the extent necessary to make a determination, and discovers that the object is attached. What is the ruling? Answer, player's entitled to move a natural object for a specific purpose of determining whether it's loose, provided, if it's found not to be loose, one, it has not become detached, and two, it's returned to its original position, but for the next stroke, if the player do so, would be a breach of the rule. In other words, the improvement, except as otherwise decided a player, if a player moves a natural object, other, to determine whether it's loose, and is found to be attached, the player cannot avoid a breach of rule thirteen dash two by avoiding the, by returning the object to its original position. Okay, so the question is, is it whether in the final paragraph, it's presumed to be an improvement, or, or why there is no penalty in the first paragraph? The answer?
You know, I think he's talking about the situation where, if you, in thirteen dash two slash zero point five, that last, leads you to believe that if I move a natural object out of the way, I cannot avoid penalty. And then how that is...
Okay, well, what I'd say to that, and I think, I think that's right, so I think the question is probably, how can this answer be, given that decision? And the answer is, that this decision is really establishing a new principle, in that, in that first paragraph for the answer, it's establishing a new principle, saying that in effect, this is an exception to rule thirteen dash two. That's in effect what the decision is doing, that, you know, you are allowed to move it for this specific purpose, provided it meets these two criteria.
And I think maybe in the first decision, thirteen dash two slash zero point five, you know the object is attached, where, you know, it may not say it, but I think there's an implication.
Yeah, thirteen two twenty-six is, well, the general principle that you're entitled to just ascertain the status of this object, and you're allowed some leeway to do that, that if that decision did not exist, then there would be a breach. Okay, well, anything else on fifteen? If not, just reminders, next week, we'll be meeting on Friday, which is the thirtieth, from eight to twelve, and we'll cover probably, we'll sixteen through nineteen, if we get past nineteen, we'll probably skip twenty, maybe twenty-one or twenty-two, just save twenty for fresh minds, if it's for the next session. And on probably Monday, Bill and David will send out an email with a reminder, again, asking people to sign up, whether you're going to come in person, just to make sure we aren't overcrowded here, or if you're joining us online, please let us know, and that will also have a link to the recording for this session. Otherwise, thank you all very much, and look forward to seeing you next week.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.